Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors November 5th, 2024 meeting. I call this meeting adjourned and I would...
All ready?
To order. Sorry, sorry. This, it's election day. Everything's a little off today. All right. All right. But I would appreciate everybody joining us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invocation by Scott Elliott from Big Valley Grace Community Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for our leaders. We thank you for all those who faithfully serve our community. We thank you for the impact that they make through their decisions and their guidance. We pray over the meeting today that whatever discussions take place would be civil and beneficial for our community. We ask that the decisions made would serve the people here best, and we thank you for this great county that we live in. Heavenly Father, I pray especially for those who are here as guests today, who are veterans. We thank you for the opportunity we have to honor them and to give thanks for them and all of their service in keeping us free and safe and giving us the ability that we have today to vote, and we thank you for their service and their sacrifice. And Heavenly Father, we do pray for our country, and we lift up the events of today. We know many people are anxious and worried and have a lot of concerns about our country and our future, and we just ask that you would bring unity and bring healing to our country, healing to our nation, and that you would bring people together, that our country would be better tomorrow than it is today, and that you would lead and guide us, and we ask that our communities would be safe, we would take action in voting and supporting the outcome of our election, and we just pray your blessing over our nation, and I ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right. So first presentation we have is Veterans of the Year Awards, and this is to acknowledge veteran families that we'll be acknowledging in Stanislaus County. So we'll start off with Ryan Kigley, our Veteran Services Officer. He will accept the proclamation on... Yes. Our clerk recorded Liz. Oh, sorry. I thought you were pointing. Okay. Yeah, so I'll be coming down, and Ryan, if you please join me. Well, this is something we wanted to make sure this year, just as we are acknowledging all our different veterans throughout the county, but also Veteran and Military Families Month, because when all of you are serving, your families are back home here, supporting you, going through a lot of difficult times managing families, jobs, households, and so we want to acknowledge all of them as well. So this year, the Board of Supervisors is proclaiming November 2024 as Veterans and Military Families Month in Stanislaus County. And on behalf of the entire family, we have Ryan, who works with a lot of the veterans and our Veteran Services Agency, accepting this award on behalf of all of the families. Thank you so much. Thank you to all the people that have served, and thank you to all of the family members that have given so much so they could serve our country. Thank you.
Thank you so much Chairman Greewall, CEO Jody Hayes, Supervisors and County Council Mr. Bose. It's a great honor for me to introduce our Veterans of the Year this year. We do have seven honorees, and I would first like to start with, from District 3, Robert Bagley. Lives in District 2. He was nominated this year for 2024 Veteran of the Year Honoree.
First of all, you go by Craig.
Yes.
So I, when I met Robert, I'd go, "You go by Robert or Bob?" He goes, "Craig."
Yeah.
And that's from a long line of Roberts, I think, in his family, so...
That's right. Bob Diggs.
Yeah, very good. So very happy you're here today. We're happy all of you are here today. This is such a great, it's a perfect time for us to be doing this today, you know, on the day that we're celebrating our freedoms that we have in this country, and one of the most basic freedoms is our ability to vote, our right to vote, our God-given freedoms. And we wouldn't have these freedoms without you guys. I mean, it just wouldn't be here. There's no question it wouldn't be here without the sacrifices that you make. And so let me just talk a little bit about you, if I could. So Craig spent, looks like from 1968 to 1972, in the Air Force.
Correct.
And you were stationed in assigned to McCord Air Force Base in Tacoma, Washington. I've been there, neat spot. And you were part of the 318 Fighter Intercept Squadron, and in Alaska for two years. His dedication earned him many awards and many medals for his services. In Alaska, where were you?
Elmendorf.
Elmendorf Air Force Base at Anchorage. I've been there too. Very good spot, so... Okay, so some of the awards that Craig got was National Defense Service Medal, Outstanding Unit Service Award Medal, Good Conduct Medal, Sharpshooter Award Ribbon. So you were a shooter.
Qualified.
Okay, qualified. Just qualified. So last thing I want to say, you know, we're celebrating all of you for your, what you guys have dedicated to our country, but we're also, as Manny says, we're celebrating the families. And we don't think about that often, but just think of the sacrifices. We were, my wife and I were blessed this last weekend. We got to go visit our son, who serves our country, and he's got three little kids and his wife, and, you know, we always praise him and thank him for his service, but the sacrifices of the families, of the wives, of the children who are at home and waiting for their moms or their dads to come back, it's just, and to have, and for the wives or the husbands that have to raise these kids while their spouses are gone, it is just an unbelievable sacrifice that we're asking them to do too. So that's why today it's so important that we not only celebrate all of you, but the families who are doing the sacrifices also, so...
I have to say one thing...
It's your turn.
It's my turn, just for a moment. Actually, my fiancee at the time and I joined together, and it was a date to go to, you know, to the induction center, kind of a thing like that. We joined together, got married in Biloxi, Mississippi, and so we're an Air Force family. She was actually in six years, and she's won Airman of the Year and first woman to be Airman of the Year in the Air Force. So I took my family with me.
That's great. That's great. That helps. That helps. But again, we thank you for all your service, for all you've done for our country, again, on such a special day, and again, without the work that you guys do, the service that you provide for this country, we would not have these freedoms and not have the ability to have a day like today to vote. So God bless you and thank you for all you've done for our country.
Now I'd like to introduce from District 1 Timothy Gilbert.
Make sure of that. So Timothy exemplifies the commitment, integrity, accountability, and loyalty of service. His family, right? They also serve, Terry talked about the service of the family. They're serving right alongside. They sometimes may be in the same spot, sometimes they may not be, and it may be months to years before they get to see him. And so we want to make sure that the families are recognized. So Tim served in the U.S. Navy from 1988 to 1999, stationed in Guam for three years. His dedication there earned many awards and medals. National Defense Service Medal, Meritorious Unit Commendation, Good Conduct Medal times three. So you must have been pretty good. Humanitarian Service times three. Thank you for doing that. So we want to just recognize you and your service to our country, and it is, Terry hit on it. Today's a special day, and it's only given to us by the men and women that serve, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Just want to say thank you to Supervisor Condit and the rest of the board. Really appreciate your support in the veterans of this community, and we have a very strong veteran community within Stanislaus County. It's nice to see everybody here, so thank you very much.
And from District 2, I would also like to introduce a brand-new veteran, recently retired, Kelly Koala. She's a Veterans Advisory Commission member as well.
Well, good morning, everyone. So if you have ever ran into Kelly on the street, she's integrated herself really well after coming out of the military, although you were in reserves. Integrated herself within the community. She's trying to serve on lots of boards. She's very active, especially in the Turlock area of my district. Kelly served in the Army from 2017 to 2024 and recently retired, like this summer, right? Just a couple of months ago. And she also has won many awards, the National Defense Service Medal, Army Reserve Component Achievement Medal, Humanitarian Service Award, Armed Forces Services Medal, Army Services Ribbon, Armed Forces Reserve Medal, Army Commendation Medal, and Good Conduct Medal. I love that Good Conduct, times three, right? Because I wouldn't have gotten one of them. So, and they did mention that she is a new member of the Veterans Advisory Commission. We went through some issues there where, you know, we had the same people serving, and now we've got some new life, and I think five of the members are being honored here today, along with Kelly. I'm so proud. We could say the same thing over and over and over again about today just falling on Election Day. It's just like the perfect day to honor veterans and their service. We often talk about the Greatest Generation, the Silent Generation, the Greatest Generation, and people put their noses down. They either were drafted, we're talking about World War II, talking about the Vietnam Conflict, and the Korean War and the Vietnam War, and came back. Some of them were heroes coming back, and some of them weren't considered heroes, and that's the sad part, because every day needs to be Veterans Day, every day we need to honor folks that strap it on, go and sign up, and serve our country. So again, on behalf of the board, congratulations. So proud to honor you today and the rest of you, and let's make this an everyday event.
First of all, thank you so much to everybody that attended today. I was like, wow, we have such a great veteran presence here in Stanislaus County. So awesome. I love how they, you know, said it's not only about veterans and service members, but also their families, because they go through a lot, including my family. And the reason why I am retiring from service is I dealt with a lot in service, and I really wanted to give back to my service members and veterans. So I said, what better way is to retire and go advocate for those soldiers and service members out of service? So my dedication is to them and to their families as well. And thank you so much to everybody, and also the County Board of Supervisors for your support always and your awesomeness in advocating for service members and soldiers.
Now from District 4, we'd like to introduce John Jeffries. He's also a Veterans Advisory Commission member.
All right. Well, I have the privilege and honor of acknowledging John A. Jeffries for 2024 Veteran of the Year for District 4. And so a lot of the things that I wanted to say have already been said about the families, and then appreciating the veterans on a daily basis. You know, days like this, it is even more important that a lot of the liberties and freedoms that we have is because of the sacrifices you made. So I don't think one day is enough to acknowledge that and appreciate you. So thank you, thank you so much from the bottom of our hearts. And then John, who also served and also serves on the Veterans Advisory Committee, one of our newer members. We appreciate you taking the time, and there's all five of the members. I was at your guys' first meeting at the swearing-in, and those meetings can be a little time taxing, but we appreciate you giving up an evening to serve and advocate on behalf of all the veterans in Stanislaus County. So some of the accomplishments outside of everything that John does for the county is he was deployed to Iraq from 2009 to 2010, then Afghanistan from 2006 to 2007. During that tenure, he received the Iran, Iraq Campaign Medal with two campaign stars, Air Medal, Army Achievement Medal, Army Reserve Components Achievement Medal, Army Commendation Medal, National Defense Service Medal, Afghanistan Campaign Medal with two campaign stars, Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, Korean Service Medal, Overseas Service Ribbon, Fourth Award, Overseas Service Bar, Fifth Award, NATO Medal, Armed Forces Reserve Medal, Combat Action Badge, U.S. Army Senior Aviator Badge, and Expert Marksman Badge with a pistol. As I'm reading through these lists, and I was looking through that, for us, it's just a list we're reading, but all the hard work and training and commitment to get all those awards, I think that deserves a round of applause just in itself. So John, we thank you so much for serving us at wartime and at peace and being a resident of Stanislaus County and doing everything you do. We appreciate you, grateful for your service. I do know some of your family. I know your wife is an attorney here in town. I know your father-in-law plays golf all day, doesn't do much else, but he's a good guy. Well, congratulations. Yeah, thank you so much, and thanks for your service. Your time to say a few words.
Thank you Supervisor Greewall. Thank you to the board. I just want to thank you also for acknowledging the families for this. As a veteran that was in from 99 until 2021, it was a rough 20 years for a lot of families. I think there was a nine, or a three-year span where I was in the United States for nine months, so I know how taxing it can be for me, and I know how taxing it was for a lot of my fellow soldiers. So thank you for finally acknowledging the commitment and the sacrifice that the families have made, and again, I appreciate the recognition. Thank you.
From District 5, I would like to introduce Freddie Morales, Veterans Advisory Commission member as well.
Before I brag on Freddie, I do want to acknowledge Elias Perez. Mr. Perez, he did the legwork on getting the county the language for the Veteran Month acknowledgment, as well as Military Families Month. So Mr. Perez, thank you for making us aware of what other counties were doing, and thank you for doing the legwork and making that proclamation possible. So again, thank you, sir. Freddie Morales, what can I say that hasn't already been said? He's a fantastic individual, a great friend, a great family man, and a true patriot. Freddie served in the Marines from 1967 to 1970, deployed to Vietnam for 13 months. His dedication earned him many awards and medals during his time of service. National Defense Service Medal, Rifle Marksmanship Badge, Good Conduct Medal, Vietnam Service Medal with one star, one service star, Combat Action Ribbon, and he's a Purple Heart Medal recipient. Freddie is one of the most humble guys you'll ever meet. He's not, he's not a bragger. He's not really a man of many words. I know he does have a few dance moves. I've seen him and his wife Lupe out of Crocodiles one time or two, and they know how to have a good time.
That's where we met.
But Freddie exemplifies everything there is to be a Marine, to be a patriot, and to be a man of action and of service. I'm proud to know you, Freddie, proud to call you a friend, and just thank you for everything you have done, not only for our country in time of wartime and peacetime, but your service to your community, your continued service to our veterans and our community throughout Stanislaus County. I love you very much, and I'm going to give you an opportunity to say a few words.
Thank you, Chance, for that, and thank you, everyone, for coming. It's a great honor to receive this award. It was completely unexpected. Somebody had to tell me I won the award. I didn't know for myself. But growing up in the late 60s, the country was in a great turmoil, and being a teenager, I knew that the draft was hanging over my head when I was in high school, so I made up my mind to enlist rather than be drafted. We had different Armed Forces members come to give us pointers on which service to join, but when I saw the Marine Corps recruiter in his uniform, I thought to myself, all the girls are going to like that. So I joined the Marines. I joined the Marine Corps. I went to Blue Camp with one thought in mind. I wanted to go to Vietnam. I was 18 years old, and I got focused on that. I turned down offers to do other jobs. I wanted to be an infantryman. I saw too many war movies, I guess, but going to Vietnam was a great awakening. When I came home, I was more thankful to God and to my family, especially my mother, who prayed for me every single day. And now that I'm retired, I joined five different veterans organizations, which keep me busy and which I prefer to stay busy and help the community as best I can. So thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
I'd also like to invite up Christopher Watts. I've actually had the pleasure of working with Chris for the last couple of years in various capacities. Please give him a round of applause. He's also the, on the Veterans Advisory Commission as well.
All right. Good morning, Christopher. And again, Christopher serves on the Veterans Advisory Committee, just joined recently, or you chair it? You chair it now?
I'm the vice chair.
Vice chair.
Freddie is our partner.
All right. Perfect. I didn't see you that night. Maybe that's why. I think you were chairing the meeting that I got to.
Yeah.
I just want to cover myself. I don't want to like not, not say that I don't know what's going, but that day I showed up. You were the one that hit the gavel, and you didn't say adjourn when the meeting started. So, all right. Well, Chris, we appreciate everything you do, take your time out, serve on the Veterans Advisory Committee, but again, service to your community, service to your country. Some of the award recipients or awards that you received were the Army Lapel Button, Overseas Service Bar, Second Award, National Defense Service Medal, Army Service Ribbon, Overseas Service Ribbon, Good Conduct Medal, Marksman Marksmanship Qualification Badge with the Rifle Bar, but not only did he get that with the Rifle Bar, he also got it with the Grenade Bar, Afghanistan Campaign Medal, Combat Infantry Badge, and Former Wartime Service Parachutist Badge. Again, that's a list of awards that many of us are not aware of. Someday, I think it'd be very enlightening for all of us to see what all those awards are given for. I mean, you can tell by the names, but the commitment, the sacrifice, the training you had to go through to those awards are sometimes lost on us because we don't know how much time was spent, so, but we appreciate you for it. Obviously, you did a lot to receive those, but again, serving your community, serving your country, we are so thankful for that. One day's not enough to acknowledge you, but we want to make sure that you, all the people that serve, feel acknowledged today for their service to the country and to our community. Thank you so much, Christopher.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. First and foremost in everything, I'd like to thank my wife, Rachel, for believing me when I didn't believe in myself. I am here because of her, as well as Ryan and Claudia, who have always been the backbone in the Veterans Advisory Commission. So that being said, I would like to thank all of the new members. I'd like to move forward with us focusing on the community. I know that we have a lot of differences, and no matter what happens today, I want to be able to move forward and make a commitment to each and every one of you that we are going to do whatever it is we can to help out this community. We have a new survey that's out on the Advisory, Stanislaus County Veterans website. If you know a veteran, please have them fill it out. We need to make sure we have data to be able to understand where the needs in our community are so we can address them. That being said, I thank you all again for this honor. Anything that we can do to help, we are there. We appreciate your support, and thank you again.
Thank you so much. And then finally, I'd like to bring up David Thompson, another Veteran Advisory Commission member. He's our last one. Please help me join him here.
Last but certainly not least, David Thompson exemplifies basic principles through his commitment to the country in Stanislaus County through his many years of dedicated service in the Marines from 1985 to 2014. His deployments were to Iwakani and Okinawa, Japan, Kuwait, Iraq, Afghanistan, Liberia, Sierra Leone, and Mali. His dedication earned him many awards and medals during his service, including Navy and Marine Corps Achievement Medal, Joint Defense Meritorious Service Medal, Combat and Action Ribbon, and Bronze Star for actions on a convoy ambush and defense of a U.S. Embassy. Joint Commendation Medal, Iraq Campaign Medal seven times, Navy Unit Commendation two times, the Joint Meritorious Unit Award two times, Armed Forces Reserve Medal four times, Armed Forces Expeditionary Medal, Defense Meritorious Service Medal, Presidential Unit Citation in the Navy, NATO Medal for ISAF Afghanistan, Global War on Terrorism Expeditionary Medal, Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, National Defense Service Medal twice, Combat Action Ribbon, Bronze Star Medal three times, Legion of Merit three times, Bronze Star and Joint Commendation Medal, USN, USMC Meritorious Service Medal by the President of Liberia, Star of Africa, Sea Service Deployment nine times, Joint Service Commendation Medal two times, Selected Marine Corps Reserve Medal eight times, and the Afghanistan Campaign Medal. I had a hard time just reading that list, so I can imagine everything you went through, all the training, everything you sacrificed to receive all those medals, and I'm sure each one was well-deserved, and I hope you feel today that you're truly appreciated for your 29 years of service to this country. It means a lot to us, and we're thankful for people like you that do this on a daily basis for the past 29 years. I'm glad you got all the recognition, but even that is not enough, and we're just giving you a little token of appreciation here in Stanislaus County. Thank you so much. Well, can you hear him? There it is.
First, I'd like to thank my departed wife. She died in 2019. We never quite made it to where we retired together. And so, Femiya suffered through 29 years of deployments and stuck it out. That list you read, I always thought what I did right was not interfere with the great people that served with me. I just have enough sense to step back and let them do great things. And I've always felt that. And so, this time of year, and I'll conclude with this.
The stage is yours. Talk as long as you want.
Is this a time of year to celebrate our veterans? And what they've done for our country. Memorial Day is about the sacrifice. This year, we celebrate you, celebrate what you've done. You've bought us a democracy. You've bought us a great country. And for that, I thank all of you that have served. But my contribution, being smart enough to let them do it.
Thank you so much. I would again just like to thank the Board of Supervisors. You don't have to do this, but I appreciate you taking the time to honor these veterans for their service and for what they continue to do in the community. Again, much appreciated. Your words are genuine and sincere, and I would again like to just honor our honorees today. So, thank you. I know this is a little off script, but I would like to invite all my colleagues to please take a group picture with all the veterans in attendance today. So if you're a veteran and you're in attendance, whether you were an award recipient, I know it's gonna make for quite the group photo, but it's a well-deserved group photo. So if you all please can join us, we'd really appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody. So for all the veterans and service members and families that are here present today, I just wanted to bring up a little bit about our Veterans Symposium that we're going to be having out in Patterson at the Hammond Senior Center this Saturday. We're actually bringing out Sergeant First Class Richard Stayscall, who actually worked with Congress to get a military medical malpractice bill passed. And he's going to be coming out from the East Coast and speaking at our event. And we wanna see as many people there, so please share the, I have a group that I, or an event that I created on Facebook, so if you just look for it, Veterans Symposium 2024 on Facebook. And just please share with y'all your veterans, service members, and their families. And then also on Friday, we invite all of you guys and your families out to Dust Bowl Brewing Company to do a social for Sergeant First Class Richard Stayscall. He has worked actively with Congress. He's met with the President and also numerous individuals to really advocate for soldiers, and your support would be greatly appreciated. So I hope to see you guys this Saturday from 9:00 to 12:00 at the Hammond Senior Center in Patterson.
What time is Dust Bowl?
Dust Bowl is, I believe, 5:00 to 8:00. 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Dust Bowl Brewing this Friday. If you have any questions, please come see me after. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks again to all of the veterans for making the time today. We appreciate you, and I'm glad the recipients, but all the other veterans in the county were able to join.
Man, if I could just for a second, we, I just wanted to give a shout out, acknowledge that our own county council, Tom, is a veteran, a Marine, a retired Marine, so.
Thank you. It's safe to say first he protected the country, now he's protecting the board. Thank you so much. So next is public comment period. This is for items not currently on the agenda. So I don't have any public comment cards, but if anybody, any member of the public would like to come and speak on items not on the agenda, this is your opportunity. All right, seeing none, I'm gonna bring it back to the board for consent calendar. Before the board takes action on the consent calendar, does anyone in the audience wish to provide public comment on any matter on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'm gonna bring it back to the board to see if there's any item that they'd like further discussion or clarification on. And if not, then I would ask for a motion to approve all consent calendar items.
Motion to approve all consent.
I'll second it. All right. Motion by Supervisor Buck Condit, second by Supervisor Terry Withrow. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. And next, we have our public hearings. And public item number 6.1 is to consider Planning Commission's recommendation of denial of rezone application, 2023-0065, Callaway Company, to request a rezone of 14.64 acres from planned development to general agriculture to a new PD. And during the presentation, we have Teresa McDonald and Angela Freitas from the county's Planning Department. Good morning, and I open the public hearing.
Good morning. Angela Freitas, your county planning director. Giving the presentation is Teresa McDonald.
Hi. Good morning, Chair Grewal, members of the board, CEO Hayes, and county council Boz, and members of the public. Teresa McDonald, I'm an associate planner with the Planning Department, and I'm here to present the rezone application for Callaway Company. So this is a request to amend the zoning designation of a total of 14.5 acres from planned development 312 and general agriculture A240 to a new planned development to allow an existing net oil and cattle feed processing facility, currently operating on 5.65 acres, to expand onto nine acres of an adjacent parcel. A lot line adjustment is included as part of the project. The project site is located at 5425 Mont Pilia Road, between East Keys Road and East Monavista Avenue in the De Nair area. The site has a general plan designation of agriculture and a zoning designation of planned development 312 and A240 general agriculture. Orchards and scattered single-family dwellings are located to the north, east, south, and west. Monavista Farming is located to the south. Approximately 5.65 acres of the site is currently developed with the existing net oil and cattle feed processing facility outlined in blue, and the remaining area is planted in almonds. The existing facility was approved under rezone number 2006-13 and was allowed to expand under use permit number 2009-3 and later under staff approval number 2011-09. The existing facility is improved with a processing building, cooking building, shed, office, and multiple storage silos and other accessory equipment. The facility has three portable office trailers, which are outlined in purple, that will be removed as the new offices are constructed, and two unpermitted covered storage areas outlined in green, which will remain and obtain building permits. There is a parking lot with 20 spaces and lighting consisting of five light poles. The facility has six-foot-tall chain-link fencing along the side of mere property lines and a five-foot-tall, 10-inch concrete and wrought iron decorative fence running along the Mont Pilia Road frontage. There is a drainage basin located on the north side of the existing facility, adjacent to the proposed expansion area, which is outlined in blue. The existing facility has two driveways from Mont Pilia Road, and existing signage consisting of two four-foot-by-eight-foot signs are adjacent to the road frontage. This request proposes to expand the facility with the construction of a cold storage warehouse, maintenance building, bottling facility, and office building, which are outlined in red. Other improvements include additional parking spaces, lighting, fencing, storm drainage swells, and landscaping strips along the road frontage and signage on the walls of the proposed buildings. One new driveway is proposed on Mont Pilia Road and three new driveways fronting H and Fifth Street, which are private roads, are proposed. The existing facility is served by a private well and septic system, and one additional well and septic system are proposed to serve the expansion. The facility operates 24 hours a day, seven days a week, which is not proposed to change. The facility currently includes a total of 25 employees with 13 on a maximum shift, which is expected to increase to a total of 35 with 20 on a maximum shift. There is currently an average of 10 daily truck trips consisting of either the delivery of nuts or picking up a finished product, which is anticipated to increase to 20. Issues identified as part of the review of the project include multiple outstanding building permits and concerns raised by surrounding landowners or area residents. So the existing facility has outstanding building permits for its existing structures that are pending actions needed to finalize the permit. If this project is approved, Development Standard Number 22 has been applied, which will require all outstanding building permit issues to be addressed prior to issuance of any building permit for the expansion, with some limited allowance for issuance if sufficient progress in addressing the outstanding permits is demonstrated. Multiple letters raising numerous concerns were received from surrounding landowners or area residents prior to the Planning Commission. Here is a map showing the parcels which receive landowner notices in gray, and the addresses of those who responded prior to the Planning Commission are shown in the purple hash marks. Residents are concerned that the development of an additional well on the project site will have a negative impact on groundwater resources. There's also a concern that should their wells go dry, the neighboring parcels will be unable to meet the minimum required setbacks from septic systems to wells. Development Standard Number 42 has been applied to the project to prevent the project site from infringing on the neighboring parcel's ability to install a rate placement well or septic system should the need arise. No significant increase in water consumption is expected to occur with the expansion as the operational elements of the bottling and cold storage building do not include significant water use. The applicant's engineer provided an updated water systems analysis stating that there will be a net reduction in water use from the aquifer due to removal of six acres of almond orchard. Residents have also expressed concerns regarding stormwater runoff from a seasonal creek that is believed to run through the project site and neighboring properties. This diagram, which was provided by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, suggests that the creek does not run through the project site. Regardless, development standards have been applied to the project requiring the developer contact the appropriately appropriate agencies to determine if any permits are required prior to construction. The project proposes to develop storm drainage swells and landscaping strips along the road frontage of the expansion area. Additionally, the applicant will be required to show how all storm water will be maintained on-site as part of the grading permit review process. Residents have expressed concerns with the potential for increased noise resulting from the expansion and have referenced issues with noise coming from the existing operation, specifically with noise coming from squeaking equipment and music coming from employee cars. One resident also stated that odor from the facility is detectable offsite. The county has not been made aware of any odor or noise complaints prior to the Planning Commission, and development standards requiring a good neighbor policy to address nuisance concerns is a well as a standard to address any future noise complaints have been applied to the project. Residents express concerns with the resulting increase in truck and vehicle trips associated with the proposed expansion and impacts to the road. County Public Works reviewed the proposed project and determined the traffic impact analysis was not warranted. A development standard has been placed on the project to require adequate on-site area to prevent the trucks entering the site from blocking any travel lane or roadway shoulder. To address impacts to the roadway, Development Standard Number 29 has been applied, requiring the facility to pay a tonnage fee to offset traffic impacts to Mont Pilia Road. Concerns regarding potential impacts to air quality in the area associated with the increase in truck trips in facility have been received. A project referral response received from the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District stated that emissions from construction and operation are not expected to exceed any of the significant thresholds for assessing and mitigating air impacts. And development standards have been applied to the project, requiring the project to obtain all necessary permits from the district. Residents have expressed concerns about how the impact to their view with the removal of the orchard and construction of additional buildings and additional lighting generated by the project. The expansion area will be developed with landscaping strips that will provide both a physical and visual buffer along the road frontage, and a photometric lighting plan will be required to be submitted for any exterior lighting to prevent glare and spill light that shines onto neighboring properties. There is also concern that the expansion will have an impact to existing historical landmarks consisting of two large grain silos, a grain elevator, and a brick warehouse located in the area. The identified landmarks are not located on the project site when the border of the expansion area is outlined in red. Two of the letters state that there have been multiple fires at the existing facility, and there are concerns there is a lack of appropriate fire extinguishing system should the facility catch on fire again. The project has been referred to both the De Nair Fire Protection District and the Stanislaus County Fire Prevention Bureau, and no comments have been received regarding fire concerns. According to information obtained by the Fire Prevention Bureau at the time of the Planning Commission, the most recently reported fire was a trash or dumpster fire in 2022. And as part of the building permit process, the Stanislaus County Fire Prevention Bureau will review the fire suppression systems that are required by fire code as well as other fire requirements as part of the building permit review process. One of the letters raised concerns that the surrounding residents were not properly notified. The county's landowner notification area requires that projects located in a rural area be notified to all landowners within one-quarter mile and at least two parcels out in every direction. And the appropriate landowners were notified in accordance with this policy. The project was evaluated for consistency with the Agricultural Elements Ag Buffer Policy. To approve a rezone, the Planning Commission must find that it's consistent with the general plan. The proposed planned development zoning designation is consistent with the existing agricultural general plan designation. If approved, the nut oil and cattle feed processing facility will become the only permitted use of the new planned development zoning district, and any expansion or amendments to the uses will be subject to additional land use entitlements. Staff reviewed, staff review found the project to be consistent with both the general plan and zoning. Pursuant to CEQA, an initial study was circulated to interested parties and responsible agencies for review and comment, and a negative declaration has been prepared. Development standards reflecting referral responses have been placed on the project. After the publishing of the Planning Commission staff report, discussions with Public Works identified issues with the location, location of existing fencing, the proposed widening of an existing driveway, and the proposed abandonment of a portion of an existing access easement. Staff proposed revisions to Development Standard 24 and the addition of Development Standard 51 and 52 to address these concerns. The Planning Commission memo may be found in Attachment 3 of the board report. The project was considered at the June 20, the 24 Planning Commission meeting. Following staff presentation, commissioners asked if the increase in water use took the removal of the almond orchard into account, if the concerns mentioned in the correspondence received for the project from surrounding landowners were addressed, if the historical buildings were going to be removed, and how long the facility had been operating at that location. Regarding the question about the water use, Commissioner Wellerup stated that there would be a net water savings of 15 acre-feet per year, and staff responded that the concerns raised were addressed to the best of staff's ability in the staff report, that no historical landmarks were going to be removed or demolished, and the facility was. landmarks were going to be removed or demolished, and the facility was rezoned in 2006 to allow it as a processing facility. During public comment, six surrounding landowners and area residents spoke in opposition. Aside from the issues discussed previously, those speaking in opposition had additional concerns regarding stormwater, specifically that the stormwater drainage basin contained processing wastewater and that it was being discharged onto the road and neighboring orchards. There were additional concerns raised regarding access, the ability for trucks to make the turn into the facility, the number of extra parking spaces provided, which exceeded what was necessary based on the scope of the project, long-term noise being generated by the facility, and that proposed buildings will impact the ability to see the historical landmarks from the road. The site plan from the staff report for the 2009 use permit was shared, which showed landscaping that was never installed, and it was stated there were discrepancies in the number of existing employees and truck trips described in that report compared to the number provided in the project description for this project. It was mentioned the staff report for this project incorrectly stated that the De Nair Fire Department had not responded to the site, and there had been a fire at the facility on July 4, 2022. Dave Romano, the applicant's representative, and Wayne McCauley, president and co-owner, spoke in support of the project and answered additional questions from the commissioners, stating that conflicts often arise when there are ranchettes in the vicinity of a project and that the board already found that the existing use was appropriate for that location when it was first permitted, that the facility takes in nuts a farmer may not otherwise be able to sell, and that if this facility cannot take in the nuts, the next closest facility is in Lodi, and that having on-site bottling will reduce overall truck trips. It was clarified that the additional water use is only for the restrooms, that the ownership changed in 2017, and the new owners were not aware of the outstanding building permits and will work to ensure they are in compliance and address any neighbor concerns. Regarding the stormwater issues, it was stated that a layer of organics from the nuts often ends up in the basin during the rainy season. After the close of the public hearing, a motion was made to strike Development Standard Number 29, requiring the facility to pay a tonnage fee to mitigate impacts to the road. The motion failed on a vote of three to three. A second motion was made to recommend approval to the board supervisors as outlined in the Planning Commission memo, which also failed on a three-to-three vote, resulting in automatic reclamation of denial to the board supervisors. Following the Planning Commission, additional information was received from the applicant and as a result of a site visit conducted at the facility on July 16, 2024 pertaining to unpermitted structures, the stormwater drainage basin, access and roadway setbacks, water, noise, traffic, fire hazards, signage, and the enforcement of the development standards. During the site visit, planning staff observed three portable office trailers and two covered storage structures, which were not shown on the original site plan for this project, and accordingly, the project description and site plan have been updated to clarify that the portable offices will be removed and that the covered storage will remain. Multiple issues were identified with the existing stormwater drainage basin, including that the processing wastewater is getting mixed in with the stormwater, capacity issues, and the depth of the basin. Following the site visit, staff from Public Works conducted a joint site visit with staff from the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board and found that since the processing wastewater is getting mixed into the stormwater, the facility will be required to obtain coverage under the water board and obtain waste discharge requirements. Accordingly, Public Works is requesting that an amendment to Development Standard Number 32 to strike the portion that is no longer applicable because the basin is no longer considered a stormwater basin is now considered a wastewater basin. There were concerns from the neighboring property owner that access to private streets, which are Fifth and Eighth Street, will be impacted by the project. Accordingly, Development Standard Number 52 requires easements to be protected unless they are abandoned or relocated. In response to questions regarding the additional water use required to serve the expansion, the applicant prepared a revised water systems analysis. The current water consumption has been revised to be 7,200 gallons per day, and the expansion will result in an additional 7,200 gallons a day for a total of 14,400 gallons per day. Regarding noise concerns, planning staff observed the noise generated by the facility from the right-of-way during the site visit. While staff has not detected noises coming from this facility that would exceed allowable standards, not all on-site activities with the potential to generate noise were occurring during the site visit. And accordingly, Development Standards Number 678 have been applied to the project to address noise concerns, which require the operation to be conducted in a manner that does not reasonably cause noise. Detectable offsite establishes a process for implementation of measures to address noise if a verified noise complaint is received, and establishes a good neighbor policy, providing neighbors with contact information for the operator along with protocols that the operator must take if contacted. Concerns were raised regarding the discrepancy in the number of employees and truck trips listed in the 2009 years permit for the existing facility, which stated the number of employees on a maximum shift was going to be 13. Caloy staff has since recalculated their existing employee numbers, which was originally listed as 15 for this project, and stated there are currently only 13. The staff report for the 2009 use permit also stated that there were six truck deliveries per day, and Caloy staff stated that they have identified they currently have an average of 5.8 deliveries per day and 2.7 trips associated with the picking up of product per day and rounded it up to 10 total to be conservative. There were concerns raised about the 105 proposed additional parking spaces shown on the original site plan for this project, and per the applicant, the extra parking spaces were shown only to have extra above the required number. The revised site plan reflects a reduction in the proposed additional parking to 53 spaces. Regarding concerns surrounding how trucks will be able to turn into the site, the applicant has provided an internal circulation plan showing how the trucks will enter and leave this facility. At the time the Planning Commission staff report was prepared, staff was still working to obtain information from the De Nair Fire Protection District regarding calls for service. Staff has since received information from the district, and the only calls to the facility within the last three years were both in 2022 for non-fire incidents. Their records indicated there was a recent fire in the area located at 5749 Montpelier Road that may have been attributed to the Caloy facility, but it was at a different location located northwest of the facility. Development Standard Number 16 allows for up to two wall signs in the expansion area, not exceeding 32 square feet inside each. While the applicant did not contest a limitation on the signage at the Planning Commission, their draft elevations at the time of this report was written reflected two wall signs consisting of individual letter wall signs, 39 and 176 square feet in size. Staff is recommending that Development Standard Number 16 remain as originally proposed, given the nature of the use and its location, the need for larger signage is not warranted. And Development Standard Number 16 provides for freestanding signage along the frontage to identify the facility to traveling public, and an unlimited number of directional signs is approved by the planning director or appointed designee to ensure that those entering the site can get to their desired destination. If the board decides to approve the applicant's request for larger wall signs, staff is recommending that the individual letters be limited to no more than two feet in height, and that the individual signs not exceed 100 square feet, which are consistent with the standards held by staff for new signage in urban industrial areas, based on those adopted by the county for the Crowes Landing Industrial Business Park. After this PowerPoint was drafted, it's my understanding that the applicant is proposing revised signage consisting of a 32-square-foot sign and 45-square-foot sign, which staff would be amenable to amending the development standard to that accordingly, and I will let the applicant's representatives speak more to their new proposal for signage at that time. Per the recommended development schedule, no building permits for the expansion will be issued until all outstanding building permits for the existing facility have been issued and finalized, unless the planning director finds that the progress made in resolving the outstanding building permits is sufficient to ensure that all compliance will be attained before the occupancy of any building permit in the expansion area occurs. The applicant will have two years from project approval to begin construction of the expansion. An extension to the development schedule may be granted by the planning director subject to issuance of a staff approval permit. 16 additional pieces of correspondence have been received following the Planning Commission meeting. 12 are letters in support from either a vendor, supplier, neighbor, or customer, and four are in opposition to the project from either a surrounding landowner or area resident. Two of the four in opposition also objected to the public hearing being held on this date and requested that the public hearing be held on December 17, as it is a night meeting, however, the applicant was unable to make that date. As stated previously, a failed vote of three to three resulted in a Planning Commission recommendation of denial to the board supervisors. If the board decides to approve the project, staff recommends the board adopt Recommendations 2 through 6 in the agenda item, including findings regarding environmental review, rezone, project approval, and introducing and waiving reading and adopting of an ordinance. That concludes my presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate the presentation. So we have a couple of questions by members of the board?
Just one real quick one. Teresa, so on the water use, initially it was going to be a net reduction, still a net reduction?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And good neighbor policies, we've done this before, but how would it be established? They have a contact person if there's a problem, but then who determines the mitigation measures of how they respond?
Angela, can you speak more to our good neighbor policies being implemented in the past projects?
So the good neighbor policy will stipulate the timeframe that they have to respond, the timeframe that they have to notify the county of what the issues are. If it was a, if the complaint is determined to be verified, then we would work with the applicant to establish what the condition would be to mitigate that issue and make sure that it doesn't happen again.
Okay. And on the wastewater, the water was being commingled, stormwater and water that was picking up organics. I know that was an issue because it had built up and allowed it, at least I think so, allowed it to spill out into the road. The process, that's under the State Water Resources Control Board, correct?
That is correct, yeah. They'll have to obtain permits from them because it's now a wastewater basin, so it's under their purview.
But they're going to probably be required to segregate those, is that correct, or could they just?
It could be commingled. It depends if they wanted to separate it or allow, have the existing stormwater go into something underground storage, but as of right now, it's just a wastewater basin, so it would have to get coverage under regional water and get waste discharge requirements. And regardless, it's still not allowed to be discharged off the property.
Yeah, everything has to be maintained. And if they can't get a permit, is there not able to secure a permit?
Then they won't be able to expand.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I've got one. The portable buildings, are they being removed?
Yes, so those are being used as offices for the employees, but they're proposing a permanent office building, so those are going to be removed as the new office is constructed.
Thank you.
No further questions. I'm going to open the public hearing, acknowledge written comments, I have three emails, and then I have a few public comment cards, and I'm just going to call them in the order that they were received. So first, public comment card is Cassandra Olson.
Good morning, everybody. I apologize, I'm getting a hold, so bear with me, please. My name is Cassandra Olson. I represent myself and my husband Travis Olson. We live at 5812 Montpelier Road, which will be directly across from the driveway that Cal Oil intends to build. Cal Oil has been a neighbor of ours for a very long time. We have been very good neighbors with Cal Oil up until now. We have tried to be very good neighbors when we had issues with anything, such as the loud machinery that would break. Mind you, I live approximately two city blocks from where it is. Where Fifth Street is, is where my driveway is, so that's how far my house is from them, okay, from right now. We've heard machinery that has been broken. I have personally called Wayne McCauley and asked him, can you do something about that? The machine is broken again, we can hear it in the middle of the night. You hear it all night long. I've tried to be good with him. We do not call the county, we don't turn them in. I call them instead, we try to deal with it. The music they are referencing was not coming from the employees' cars. The music was coming from a very loud stereo system that I could hear from my house at 2:30 in the morning. And when we called down to the plant to ask them to turn the music off, they informed us that the boss told them they could have it and they have to keep it loud because the machinery is loud. So it's not coming from their cars. Just for the record, De Nair Fire Department says they have no record, but yet I have a letterhead from a person from the De Nair Fire Department that shows one, two, three, four, five, six incidences that they have on record. So I don't know what De Nair Fire Department person you talked to, but the person from De Nair Fire Department that I talked to, Matt Scott, sent me this. So if you'd like to have this, I can get that to you. Okay, so that's not true. The temporary buildings, not allowed to be there, okay, that they have. Let me read my thing, because I wrote a thing, I apologize, getting off script here. The current Cal Oil location has many violations since their first permitting in 2007 and then again in 2009. It has been 17 years, and not only have they not completed items the county has asked originally to have, they have continued to add on violations. In 2009, Cal Oil was supposed to plant two rows of trees surrounding the north side and half of the west side of the property. Prior to occupancy, as of today, there are still no trees planted, and in fact, they only put up green fencing recently because I go down on easement property and take pictures of the property. All the pictures you saw submitted were from me. I have more. Cal Oil was allowed to have seven max employees per shift, per the 2009, yet per their 2024 report, they are operating with 15 employees per shift. That is more than double the amount of employees per shift that is not approved. Now they want to up it to 20 per shift, so does that mean they're going to end up having 45 people per shift? I mean, these are legitimate questions. And actually, I heard Teresa mention something about more employees than what I actually have here, so that's going to go up even more. Cal Oil is allowed to have approximately six delivery trucks per day, per the 2009 report. Per the 2024 report, they currently average 10 trucks daily, which is not approved. Now they want to up it to 20 trucks per daily. Okay, just a side note, I had to go down last Thursday and have a conversation with one of their truck drivers because our neighborhood, I know everybody wants to say there's a few dwellings, Montpelier was a town, we are a neighborhood, okay? There are three children in that neighborhood who ride the De Nair school bus. The De Nair school bus makes three stops between Cal Oil and Keys Road. One of their truck drivers went past the school bus, sped up to go past it. When I went down to have a conversation with him of why he went past the school bus when it was stopping to pick up a child, he said, I was fine, I was only going 40 miles an hour. There are three children that stand there getting on the school bus, and their truck drivers apparently don't care. I told Cal Oil, you need to tell your drivers to maintain the speed limit in a school zone, there are signs saying school buses come, okay? In the 2009 report, it says all runoff shall be kept on-site, but as you see per photos there and per photos that I also have additionally here, that if you'd like to see them, that Cal Oil does not, this is on the north side of the building, it's going into Noragies Orchard, okay? The land they're wanting to expand on, just for the record, is owned by Vic Quantrum. They do not own that property yet. They're wanting to buy it, okay? It runs off, and they had a pump going from the front of Cal Oil to that pond all the way up to the Dry Creek area. We have a neighbor that can attest to that. They say that the holding pond is just water, but as you can see from the pictures that I submitted, it is not. They have sludge everywhere. When I went to talk to that school, to the truck driver the other day, there's sludge in the front of the building that I took pictures of. So they're not maintaining anything. They have no common courtesy for our neighborhood, our land, or our well water whatsoever, okay? Cal Oil has had numerous fires, okay? And this is the big thing, their fires, they don't call the fire department because they don't want record of it. Their guys go out there and put it out with either equipment or handheld fire extinguishers. I have video of it, I have pictures of it, I can show you. This whole book is Cal Oil pictures right here, you can see for yourself. There's guys standing out there, two fire extinguishers trying to put a fire out. What is the safety of a bigger building if that's how they main- they don't want record of it. Their guys go out there and put it out with either equipment or handheld fire extinguishers. I have video of it. I have pictures of it. I can show you. This whole book is Cal Oil pictures right here. You can see for yourself. There's guys standing out there, two fire extinguishers trying to put a fire out. What is the safety of a bigger building if that's how they maintain things, okay? Cal Oil has not only completed things, not completed things from 2009, they have, they have the nerve to ask to expand without any permitting. These buildings that they have that you talk about, are the temporary buildings going to be gone? They shouldn't be there now. And in fact, those temporary buildings, not only are they not there like the way they're supposed to, they're a safety hazard because the stairs are held up by wood that I almost tripped on when I went up to try and talk to somebody about the driver the other day. The whole railing moved when I went to walk on it because it's wood holding it up, okay? Cal Oil is not following procedures now. Why are we going to let them expand into our neighborhood? You want to take what I have, what I've paid for 32 years for, of a view of trees and living in the country where we choose to live, to put an industrial bottling company in? It's not industrial site. This is agriculture land. We can't keep taking our ag land away to make companies. And what's going to stop Vic Quantrum from then selling off another piece of his land once you rezon this to an Amazon distribution center? Because we're the perfect location for it. If you don't know where we're at, we're right between Turlock, Oakdale, and Merced County. So it's a great area to have things, okay? At the last meeting, Wayne McCauley mentioned that he was going to flush a few more toilets. It wasn't going to take much more water, but it is.
Excuse me, ma'am, I don't, you've been allotted five minutes. I let you go a little bit over because I know you were making some points, but to be fair to everybody else, I'm going to have to, either you can close out your thoughts or...
I just want you to know that we've tried to be very good neighbors, and the letters that were sent in agreeance, these aren't even our neighbors. They don't live in Montpelier. I have copies of them. They don't, okay? The two that do, they are employees of Vic Quantrum that they're buying the property from. Just closing out, they're making a lot of lies, they're saying things that aren't true, and we don't want them to expand in our neighborhood. Let them go out to Washington and expand. That's an industrial area. Go out to Washington Street. We don't want our neighborhood, we don't want Montpelier Road turning into Washington Street and Turlock. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, I have is Travis Olson.
I'm going to read out Mike McCauley. He wasn't able to make it here today.
There's a comment card for Mike McCauley, so...
Yeah, I'm representing him. It says here, it says, Cal Oil, my name is Mike McCauley. I am the original owner of Cal Oil property, having bought it, bought it from Southern Pacific Railroad. I got the original use permit, which was, only could be strictly ag processing. Ag-related and built originally buildings where Cal Oil is today. I still own the grain elevator north of the warehouse. The railroad property line used to run next to the head walls of the elevator and the walls of the warehouse. We were told the railroad representative, representative, that they would move the line out past where the siding came in, so all the buildings were not right on the line and had access to, access on all sides. But neither the railroad nor the county followed through and changed it, along with finishing the road right away on Fifth Street. Also, there was supposed to be a legal right away from the center door of the brick warehouse out to Montpelier Road. Montpelier and the entire east side has had a dropping water table and a well trouble for years, including the domestic wells in Montpelier. From what I have learned, when the groundwater management plans get fully implemented, there could be a substantial amount of farmland that will have to be taken out of production. With that said, I just can't believe allowing a large industrial bottling and coal storage plant would, with, I suspect probably retail and who knows what else will be considered. As Cal spokesman said, it's hard to read what he had writ. Oh, condescendingly and argumentally, we are just going to be flushing a few more toilets when they already stated the water usage, and you know it will be more than they estimate. He also stated that the water usage would be less than the orchard there is now. My answer is, to that is, those trees could be pushed out easily, but the industrial bottling plant will be there 24 hours a day, every day forever. With all this going on in the local area, farmers will have to take farmland out in production because of water issues. And this board, to even consider this, is just plain dumb. Both farmer and present owners, oh wait, both former and present owners of Cal Oil have never done as the county laid out in other conditions of their permit. They have had fires, numerous building issues, and no way to get rid of their storm water except to, except pumping it down the side of the road and eventually into Sand Creek, which ends up in the TID main canal. And now they are not irrigating their landscaping with storm water. I checked it, and in the first place, you could not put that filthy nasty water through that small sprinklers without a lot of trouble. I could not find any evidence of anything or any, any way they had to get it out of the cesspool into any sprinklers. When Cal started this project, why didn't they reach out to the community of Montpelier and explain things and try to work with them? Nothing was said. I never received any notification about the project, even though I am a landowner. One of the Cal Oil officers said they wondered why no one had come and talked to them. He was, he has that, this all backwards. It is their job to come and talk to the residents and the neighbors and explain things, not to others around, even though they did take time to promote it to the board of supervisors where they thought it would have more impact. The only response we got from Cal Oil was the planning commission meeting after we all spoke, their spokesman got up and said that, said in his very smart arrogant way, how beautiful this was going to work, and among their things, he couldn't understand why and why we were so upset that this operation could be no, no worse than almond harvests. I could not believe that I heard comparing A2 to, A2 to three weeks harvest to 24/7 commercial bottling operation, those lights, backup alarms, traffic all hours of the night and night, disrupting everyone's life in the neighborhood for years to come. What kind of fool would make such a stupid crazy statement and then wonder why everyone is so against this project personally? I was, I was damned insulted with the attitude of these people. It made Cal and his representatives look pretty small. What it shows is they don't care as long as they get the, get what they want, and nobody bothers them. I went through the same thing 36 years ago on the same property, and the almond hauler, almond hauler piled tarped and fumigated almonds on the property, which was fine until the weather changed in the late November when it got cold and foggy and fox talks and gas starts drifting off the piles and start settling across the road. It was a noticeable smell and the people got sick. Long and short story, the neighbors complained to the hauler, and the personnel at the hauler were mad that the neighbors were complaining. They could care less as long as the operation was not bothered. A couple of their people told me they were not happy with the neighbors who were complaining and did not want to deal with those people across the road and their...
Excuse me, sir. Can you just finish up your points? I have let you go over five minutes, and I know there's a lot of speakers wanting to speak, to be fair to everybody, I gotta give everybody a five minutes.
Yeah, that was a...
Mr. Olson, if you want to just give the clerk of the board the letter, that would work as well. She's over here.
All right, thank you. Next speaker is Lauren Hale.
I'm Lauren Hale. I'm a resident of Montpelier. I just kind of listened to some of what you guys had said as far as the original statement. So some of the things that pointed out to me was the outstanding permits, those haven't been done at all. The water usage per day and definitely the wastewater, that, the wastewater has no lining or it's not engineered. It's over 10 feet, and I think it's in violation of the Lamps Program. What I, what I would like to see, I think there's other options that Cal Oil could use as far as turning that property east and west versus where they have now. That would get rid of a lot of, I think, of the noise problems. It would also get rid of our land value issues. Our property values are going to decrease. I want you guys to know that, and that's, that's like a really big issue. Montpelier's been a town for a long time, and it definitely does, it does have the beautiful, you know, brick buildings and the grain silos, and I really do feel that they, if they did go east and west and change sort of their, their planning, it may just, you know, kind of switch a lot of the property owner's views. There is also, in the back of the property, there is old, an old street that they could use to where they could access Keys Road as, as far as traffic reduction. I don't know if they've explored these options, but as far as going in front of everybody's property, that would totally eliminate, I do believe, most of everybody's issue as far as traffic and, and noise complaints. They really do need to take care of their problems. We gave at first, Joe Collins came to me, and he asked me if, if he could go ahead and process their, this facility. They had several fires in Riverbank. Riverbank shut them down. They were pushed out to, to Montpelier and asked to, to use Montpelier as a facility. At first, it was very, very small, a very small operation, it was no big deal. It was kind of like, hey, you guys can come out, no problem. We're, we're all, a lot of us were small business owners ourselves, so it's, it's not like super big thing. Now that I know that Cal Oil wants to expand this 180,000 square feet building, I mean, this is massive, guys. This isn't just a little bit of project. This isn't just like a, well, whoa, we're going to put 180,000 feet of building in front of, it's huge. It's not small. That's the only reason why we're all complaining, and it definitely is going to drop our property values down, is going to drop our land value. Jeez, I couldn't fathom putting, putting this huge of a building just in front of a neighborhood. So I, I do think that they have options that would appease everybody, but, let's see. I think that's about all I really do have to say, other than their, their storm pump. They do have to, they have to, they have to go with our regulations. We, we have a storm pump. Lamps requires a septic system, just to put, you have to be 10 feet away from any, any type of storm water. We, we really need to see this engineered. This, this was never ever put in front of you guys. I think they're pulling the wool over your guys' eyes as far as what they're going to do. As far as a manufacturing facility, I do believe that they want this to be completely industrial. So I really, really would feel like happy if you guys denied them for, and just keep this ag property like it was meant to be way back when. So I do believe, I believe my time is up, and thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jeff Barnes.
I operate the elevator on the north end of the property. I rent it from Mike McCauley with a promise to future, future purchase it. My concern is my ability to use the elevator in the future after they, after this proposal, if it's, if it goes through. We do create a little dust there sometimes. We don't really make any noise. Our facility is used on a minimum basis. It's, it's something that we use for our facility, I mean, for our farming operation, and to limit us to where we couldn't use anymore would be, would be hurtful to our, our operation. I think there are other options, like some of the other people said, that they could do this, they don't need to do it right there. I don't know why it has to be right there, other inconvenience for them. It's going to be hard on the people that live there. They've been there a long time. I don't think it's necessary to be there. Okay, thank you.
All right. Next speaker, card I have is Pamela Hale.
Good morning, thank you for seeing us. Well, everyone has pretty much said everything I was going to say, except maybe I can clean up a little bit. Our property taxes are going to plummet, our property values are going to plummet, and there's concerns, of course, of our wells, and also, we want to know who's going to pay for the road, if it has to be widened, are property taxes going to go up on that? Because if our values go down, our property taxes should go down too. There is an alternative property, as Lauren mentioned, behind Cal Oil, that is owned by the same owner of the property they are looking at now. There's no reason why they can't go build on that property, which goes west, and it's not across the houses. It's, it goes west and it crosses H Street, which I sent a map, an email with a map on it. H Street is pretty much abandoned, but supervisors can always turn that around, and that road leads out to Keys Road. So that would eliminate a lot of traffic problems, and then they can use their money, their own money, not our money, tax money, for roads paved to that direction. Wells, who's going to pay for my new well? My well is drying up, and the capacity of 45,000... Well, they said they've changed that, but are they going to really? A bottling company, are they gonna use water for their bottling company? We have a lot of questions on that. But I think we've got three new neighbors out there who have bought recently. They bought at high prices and if our land price values go down, they're gonna be upside down on their loans. One's a very new young couple and a retired couple. I'm retired. We don't have the extra money. We have this investment and this is our livelihood for the rest of our lives, most of us. I don't think there's a single renter out there. We're all land owners or property owners out there. So, we're all very concerned that we're gonna end up being poppers with our land going down in value. So, is Caloi going to buy our homes at today's market price? I don't think so. And we just need your support as supervisors for our little community and neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker card I have is for Miguel Perez.
Morning. I'm here to represent my parents, Miguel Perez. I'm Miguel Perez Jr. I lived 56-42 Montpelier up till about 2018. My parents still live there. Pretty much agree with everything our neighbors have said in regards to the issues that we see. Talking with my parents, their biggest concern though is the traffic, that the road's not very wide. We already have a lot of cars that speed through there. So, it's just, if you're gonna have big trucks turning into another site, it's just an accident waiting to happen. Like, my parents' home is an older home, built in 1946. It's pretty close to the road. So, yeah, their biggest concern is accidents that could happen there in the future. And, but yeah, we've witnessed lots of the fires that have happened there in the past and also the pumping of water onto the street from the pond in the past. So, that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Ken Roost.
I'm a member of the family that owns and farms the almond orchard surrounding much of the Caloi plant. And by contrast, I'm speaking very positively this morning about Caloi. I've enjoyed positive relations with them as a neighbor, very responsive to any concerns that we have, very responsible, very capable. They run a clean operation. They've provided us tours in the past. And as an almond farmer, Californian, it's a big business for our state and making every use possible of the nut, the hull, the shell adds value and credit to the product. And Caloi actually cleverly uses what would be waste nuts to create a viable product, which we also support. So, we would encourage you to approve the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next public comment card I have is Daryl Cordova.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. I'm speaking as in opposition because if they haven't met the compliance requirements right now, what's gonna keep them from meeting the requirements in the future? They could, again, violate and not comply with the rules after you have already approved it. Regulations and development have caused a lot of loss of ag land. Today, we are losing 4.3 acres per minute in the country and 1% of the population feeds 100%. So, think about that. We don't have a lot of farmers left. We have a lot of longtime farmers in the area and we want to keep it that way and keep production because otherwise, what's happening right now, so we used to be as a country a real exporter, now we're a net importer. And so, if we're relying on other countries for food, where's our food safety? And so, that's a concern. You heard from the other residents and from the introduction that there's a lot of different concerns in the community. And so, the roadway, for example, there's a lot of traffic through there. It's almost like the I-5 of the east. And so, with the traffic through there and trucks turning and cars turning and more workers there, it could be a real traffic problem. That's gotta be addressed. And so, when you're traveling down through there at night, the lights they have already, there's a couple of lights that looks like headlights coming at you. And so, if they're gonna be putting in more lights, how's that gonna affect traffic? How's it gonna affect the residents across the road and noise and other issues as well? The law, and you're talking about like you're losing six acres, but then you figure, like I said, 4.3 acres per minute. That's not good. And so, the water issue, Sigma is kicking in and as a result, they're establishing a baseline for our water district. That baseline then will be cut down 10%. And so, we're gonna be short on water and it could cut us severely. We might have to fallow land. And I hope it doesn't come to that degree, but like I was talking to the Johnsons and they were saying that what's, how come they would be able to put in a new well and we can't? And we're being cut on water and so, if we're reducing that, that water issues, if they're putting in a new well, then it's gonna cut back on what we're able to use. And so, that is a major issue for all of us in farming. And then, with the expansion, what's the, like it was mentioned before, what's to stop them from expanding even more in the future? What's to stop other companies from coming in and buying up land? And even companies like this, they're from out of the country and where's it all gonna end? How many countries are we gonna let into there? How many other industries are we gonna bring in on ag land? And so, that is a major concern. Noise pollution, air pollution, water pollution, those are all factors and that's a major issue in the state and should be addressed here as well. And so, with the issues that we have there and especially like traffic and with the neighbors, they're concerned about all of this right across the street from them and we need to consider the safety. We need to have like turn lanes and need to be concerned, especially with the water issues and air, other quality of our environment. I hate to see more ag land go under. And so, be nice and consider the value of the ag land. Where's your food gonna come from in the future? Okay, we are wiping out, you can see the development in the valley right now. They say eventually this valley may be like LA. I hope not. We need to keep, this is a land here that is one of the prime agricultural environments in the world, only like five or seven of them in the world. And why lose this one too? Thank you.
Right, thank you. Is there any members of the public that didn't turn in public comment card but would like to speak on this item? All right, please proceed forward.
Thank you, Chairman Graywell, members of the board, Dave Romano. On behalf of Caloi, it's a real pleasure to be here before you this morning with this project and it's actually, one of the joys of my job is that I get to represent people that do business in our county, that support our ag community and with that, I get to go out and look at these facilities to see what they do, to find out what people do to support our ag community. And every time I do, I kind of learn a lesson and so forth. That's a lot of fun. I'm joined by Wayne McCally. He operates the Caloi facility. I want to thank staff for all of their hard work. They actually spent a couple of days out of the site, have viewed the site and looked at that. I want to thank our suppliers and supporters. You've received a number of letters in support. In addition, JT Cattle Company that gets cattle feed from this facility wrote a letter of support, Growers Direct. Bill York from Rolling Hills Nut is here for support. We appreciate that. Mr. Roost from Noraghi Farming is here as well. Caloi is an agricultural use in an agricultural zone. Based on staff's determination, we need to get a planned development, but it's a pretty typical use that we see out in the ag area. Out in the ag area, we have uses such as Bronco Winery, the Sierra Grain Terminal, Cam Urgic, that are all on substantially larger sites, the Darling Tallow Plant, Slida Hulling. And one of the things that this board's very familiar with and we've seen over a number of years is that anytime we work out in the ag zone, if there are ranchettes in the vicinity, we do have a little bit of a conflict. But we've been supportive as a community of these ag uses in the ag zone and the services that they provide to the adjacent farmers. So, what Caloi does and what I learned a little bit about is they accept what are called Form 8 nuts. I never knew Form 8 nuts were a thing, but 2% of these nuts are supposed to be deemed inedible. And so, when you have inedible farm product, you know, if you can find a way to monetize that, if you can find a way to take that to a facility and process it and add value to it, that's a benefit. That's a benefit to the community. That's a benefit to the farmers that have a place to get rid of that product and that's what Caloi does. Caloi basically will take walnuts and turn that into a food oil. They will take those almonds that aren't able to go into the larger market and turn that into maybe a cosmetic project, product, and they also create feed cakes for cattle. So, just like a winery will take grapes, turn them into a product, like a huller will take almonds and turn those into a product that's then ready to be shipped out. Caloi takes an agricultural product, it turns it into a useful product that can be spread out around the community and it actually benefits that ag community. One of the things that's important to understand about this process, this project, is that it does not increase the processing capability of the plant. The way that the facility operates today is the product is brought in, it is processed into either large barrels or tankers and then it has to leave the site to a bottling facility to be bottled. It may in turn come back to the site for labeling before it leaves and goes to its end destination. So, when it moves like that, it creates two additional truck trips at the site that wouldn't be necessary once we get this project done. So, once we build the new buildings, we're gonna be able to take the product that is processed and move it by pipe directly into the bottling facility and get it bottled and get it packaged up and move it off of the site in basically a truck trip in to bring the product, a truck trip out with the finished product, rather than a truck trip in, put it in a tanker, send it off, maybe bring it back once it's in a facility and then move it off. So, the project in and of itself should actually reduce truck trips. Now, there will be a few more employees. They drive general, more typical cars, they don't drive trucks. We have asked for a few more truck trips just to make sure we stay within our permit requirements. The other thing that's important for the board to know is that truck trips in and out of this site only occur Monday through Friday, 7 to 5. While the site may process within the buildings over an extended time, truck trips are only Monday through Friday, 7 to 5 and should be very typical to what's there now. There won't be an increase in truck trips. What's also important for the board to understand is that there's actually gonna be a reduction in the amount of water that's used. Chairman, could I have just a few more minutes? Thank you so much. So, the existing nine acres are all irrigated via deep well, so they get the basic water consumption that nine acres of almonds via deep well would provide to the site. The new project will basically have a little bit of landscaping, will have a few more employees that will use those facilities, but it's not a water-intensive project. So, we've actually prepared the water balance. We've provided that water balance to the Department of Environmental Resources, to your planning staff. And not only will the project result in a similar truckload at best, but will actually reduce water consumption. So, there'll be less water consumption. So, if you're a neighbor to this project, the well, the water consumption is not going to increase. It is not going to increase your wells. And the reason that we're adding a new well is that the project site is a little bit long. It is surrounded by roads. It's a viable site for this type of project, but because we have to send water a long ways from the south end to the north end of the project, that second well just gives us not only a redundancy in our well system, but the ability to loop those wells, make sure we meet fire code requirements and other things. But there will not be more water being pumped, there will actually be less water. So, at the end of the day, this is a project for Caloi that will allow its processing capability to remain, will allow its project to become more efficient, to be more cost-effective, to continue to create a product that serves the ag community, to do it on this site, to not increase truck trips, to reduce water trips, and we believe to continue to provide that benefit to the ag community. I've been out there a number of times. It's a quiet area. When the operation is quiet, I know there are periods of the time when that road is very busy. It's probably more harvest-based and more people that are traveling by this facility and created by this facility. This is relatively low-impact facility and so, it just seems like the right location and Caloi needs to continue to thrive and provide those supports that we provide to the ag community. There was talk of one condition of approval. Staff basically stated that they could support that. On the south side of the bottling facility, and I don't, Teresa, if you could pull that exhibit up, there you go. So, the Caloi sign that you see on that south elevation, that does not face Montpelier Road. That actually faces to the south. There's a central driveway where most of the traffic will come in and they'll come onto the site and they'll either turn to the south where there's processing or they'll turn to the north if they have something pick up there. And so, Mr. McCally just asked me if that Caloi sign could be a little bit larger. We would like it to be maybe 3 feet by 15 feet. We've been limited to 32 square feet, which is the size of a sheet of plywood. We've asked for 45 square feet, so the letters can be a little higher and larger. Those are not illuminated letters. They just identify that building, so when somebody comes in, they can see it. So, we think that that was kind of a modest request from the original proposal that had 176 square foot sign and a 39 square foot sign, down to 32 and a 45 on that Caloi sign. And so, that's just a minor adjustment. We appreciate staff being flexible. We had that conversation with them before. But at the end of the day, I'm, it's been a little bit of a mystery to me how a project like this was initially determined that it needed to be a planned development and was not a Tier 1 use. We permit a lot of ag Tier 1 uses. We do hullers and shellers and those types of uses in the ag community all the time. We're immediately adjacent to Monta Vista Farming. There's a number of other facilities. It's modest in size, but that determination was made before I got involved in this project. The existing facility has a planned development. We were asked to use that mechanism just to go ahead and get this expansion entitled and I'm pleased to have been a part of this. I think it's gonna be a great project for the county and it provides an opportunity to continue to add value to our farm product and to continue to distribute it. And I'll just kind of like a little side note. So, I thought this was interesting when we visited this. One of the largest users of walnut oil is this kosher walnut oil. They actually create a kosher walnut oil that goes back to Israel over the Passover and the rabbi comes and they make sure they make it and it's appropriate. And so, this is a product that you can see in stores bottled for walnut oil, but it's another way for us to take our product and spread it all over the world. And I think that's exciting and something hopefully that this board feels like they can support. And so we would ask for your approval. We don't have exception to, take exception to any of the other conditions of approval. We have some road improvements we need to do. We have some fees we need to pay. Brett Potter, when it was brought to our attention that a number of buildings had not been finalized at the site, Brett Potter has been actively working with both the chief building official over the last few months to make sure you get those buildings finalized. And, you know, I've seen this a lot, that when you build a building, when you build a building out in the country and you build a building and you get your first inspection and your second inspection and your third inspection, the inspector comes out and he says, "Okay, all you need to do is do these three things and you're done." If you don't call him back out for that final inspection, your building's never been cleared, even though everything's been up to code. And so we had some issues where buildings weren't finalized, but we've been working actively to get those cleaned up. So with that said, Chairman, I appreciate the extra time that you've given me. We appreciate all of staff's hard work, and we ask for your approval. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. All right. Any other members of the public that would like to speak before I close the public hearing?
Can I say one additional thing?
I've already given you an opportunity to speak. I apologize.
Do you want to weigh on the council members on the other side and wish that they were going to pass that or otherwise, because they wanted the money to stay in the service house?
All right. I'm going to close the public hearing. And I'm going to bring you back to the board. We talk.
Yeah. I'll wait for Terry to get back. Anybody else need to?
Maybe if I could ask Angela, because there's, there's been people requesting that they go west across, what is it, H Street? Is that something, looking at the configuration of the property, I think it's like a 190-acre parcel, 160-acre parcel going into the other one. I'm assuming it's Williams-Schnack. Would that have been allowed to carve out a five or six, and make a T out of the parcel, essentially? Or because that, I'm just asking because...
Can't say that I've done a lot of research into it, so I may be missing, missing something. If it is Williams-Schnack, that would be, that would be a little problematic without a cancellation. As with this one, there is a lot line adjustment that's involved. So if you had willing property owners who are willing to adjust lines, and we could get the access back out to Montpelier or to another right-of-way, I won't say that it's not feasible, but we haven't really researched it.
All right.
I'm going to make some notes.
I hope that Snowville Fifth Street is not the street.
Before we start further conversation, I'm going to take a couple-minute break if anybody needs to, if you wish to remind me. And it's been brought back to the board for further questions, comments, clarifications. So any members of the board? All right. To Brett Withrow.
Yeah, many, I'll go. This is, first, thank you, Angela, Teresa. Thank you guys for the presentation and thank all of you, all the speakers, for their comments. This is a hard one because, you know, we, as Daryl said, let's see if Daryl's still here. But, you know, we are all about agriculture and preserving our agriculture. And so, so it's difficult when we get into these, because as we all know, it's the lifeblood of our, of our economy here. And as we get into these situations where we have houses out in agriculture areas, which, you know, I'm one of them. I know I live out, and I'm trying to picture myself, how I would be if I was in an agriculture, if I had one of these facilities potentially coming up against my property line, not where we live, out on the west side of Paradise Road. And there would be concern, but then the thing that I always have to, and it's tough right now living out there. I mean, every year at harvest, our house disappears in a cloud of dust, and it's just gone literally for, during harvest, and it's like you can't even see it from the road sometimes. But that's my deal. That's my fault. I moved into an agriculture, I live in an agriculture area, and I don't want to, that's what, the industry that's supposed to be going on out there, and it's not for me to interfere with that, so. But it is painful at times dealing with that. And I look at this one in a way that I consider it, I know we're looking at, it's good planned development, have to get, we have to go planned development, but really it's, this is still, I'm looking at Angela or Teresa, like it'd normally be like a Tier 1 use. Wouldn't this fit into like a Tier 1 use, Tier 2 use?
So to kind of explain that a little bit, Tier 1 use, you get into like you're hauling and shelling and you're waiting, you're grading them and sorting them. When you start to kind of modify the product, just as if you've got a grape and you're now squishing it to make, you know, wine or grape juice, that becomes a Tier 2 use because you are processing it. And so under the Tier 2 uses, there's then requirements that you have a certain amount of ag on the land itself, and that's what kicked this one from being a Tier 2 use permit to being an ag PD, because there was no ag use that went with that parcel.
Okay. And the other thing that I compare it to, and I saw that in the descriptions here, I think it was probably in statements that David made, Salida Hauling, which was a very difficult, before my time, but out of my district, that was very upsetting to neighbors also out there when it was coming and going to happen. And again, it was before I was on the board, but very similar houses right across the street from it. Angela, I don't know, did it, was it comparable, the situation is?
Yeah, there's two that come to mind. Sierra, Salida Hauling and Sierra Grain. Both of them had, you know, this, you could call a concentration of ranchettes right across the street who had some opposition to it.
Yeah. And Salida Hauling, when it was all said and done, I drive by it every day, two times a day, actually. I go home for lunch and I, and the, how they've done it there, the aesthetics with regard to right there along Dakota, on the east side of Dakota, and kind of a buffer zone almost. They put juniper trees up there and just, I mean, I really can't even, the facility has turned out to be a good neighbor, a very good neighbor for everybody there. And at the time, it was the end of the world. I know when that thing was going in for the people that lived there, thought this was totally going to devalue the property. Since then, I've seen houses there that are across the street that have been remodeled, upgraded, and beautiful new homes built also across from it. So I understand the concerns. I totally understand the concerns that everybody has of where this is going to go. But I think all of these things can be mitigated, and that's our job, to make sure that these things are mitigated in various forms, whatever that's going to look like. And that's what I would suggest, is I look at this to the, to the east, I guess it's looking east, right? It's the east side of this is where the homes are. And I would, you know, whether it's conditions that are already here or conditions that need to be out of here, is to, right now, these people have a beautiful orchard across the street. I get it, you know, and now you're going to have this building there. But I would, I would suggest that somehow we put something in there that, unless it's already in here.
There are conditions, so the buildings will be set back to the west side. There is some storm drain swales that will be landscaped. There will be some trees that will be planted. So it'll be some landscaping that will separate the houses from the facility itself.
Yeah. And I would emphasize those trees should be in large trees. It would really block the view, really help, so these individuals wouldn't have to stare at this. But again, it's hard because it's agriculture. We're living out in an agriculture area, and this is just part of the deal. And, you know, we have a right to farm and a right to, you know, this is, supports agriculture out there. And so, so from my standpoint, as difficult as this is, if we can do enough things to mitigate this, as I said, this is, this is something that should, should still be allowed to help support our agriculture industry, and really that's what we're looking to do with this. So I support this. I'll support this project. Like I said, I'm, I know it's hard for everybody out there, but we need to do what we can to make it so it's, so it just, it will be better and there'll be good neighbors there. So, thank you.
Superior buck, come in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No project is ever perfect. This is one of those. But what our main job is to look at whether the project is consistent for the zoning. I believe that it is. I believe that the issues that are being created can be mitigated, just as my colleague, Mr. Withrow, said. So I think those issues can be mitigated. It is going to be creating jobs, good jobs, and it's going to be reducing the water usage at that site. So I think all of the, all the issues that are coming forth are issues that can be mitigated. So I will be in support of this, this project also.
I'm just, I know there's a couple of people still left to speak, but I'm just going to say also with the zoning consistency, and one point that was brought up is the reutilization of the commodity multiple times, and this being reutilized for purposes that can be used. And that's where the county really is going with how we can amplify or accelerate our agricultural waste and utilize it for other ways that it could be beneficial, not only here in our county, but across the world, based on some of the conversations had here. And then the other thing, I guess, encouraged by is, one of the speakers said that the communication mechanisms in the past have been fruitful when a concern is brought up to, to the applicant, that they've had to, had success in having the conversation. And with this, you know, I hope that's one of the ways that we can mitigate risk and some of the concerns alongside with what the planning department and the board will put in place when they approve this project. But it is a neighborhood. It is something that has worked as far as relationships, and I hope that communication is utilized to mitigate some of those concerns. So I'll be supporting this project.
All right. Any other members of the board?
So, first of all, if I could have the fire warden come forward, because that's something I can't get out of my head. I had sent him a text regarding, Cassie said that, one of the board members said there were six calls, and I know I'd asked you beforehand if there were some calls, maybe you can clarify.
I'd be happy to. Chairman Graywell, members of the board, CEO Hayes, County Council Post, thanks for letting me come up here to address the discrepancy between what the planning department put on their PowerPoint and the document that De Nair Fire provided. The reason for the discrepancy was that the, the numbers that we got were three rolling years, which we have in our computer aided dispatch system, so that's available to us. There were two calls during those three years. The document from De Nair Fire was pulled from their closeout reports. Those reports went back to the beginning of 2019. So over six years, they've had about six calls out there, two product fires, a forklift accident, a vehicle fire, and two EMS calls. That quantity of calls is completely normal. It's not out of the ordinary for a fire district to have that number of calls at a facility like Caloi. So we don't see any, any reason to have concern over that. I've discussed the project with the fire chief. The fire chief has not voiced any concerns on behalf of the fire department for the project.
And there is a fire sprinkler requirement in the new buildings?
Yes, there will be, there will be a water requirement, so there have to be fire water on-site for the facility. There'll have to be sprinklers, notification systems, alarms, that kind of thing.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. Three years versus six years on the thing. So I had originally asked this to be held at a night meeting of staff. Usually when we have land use decisions like this, they're, they tend to be more contentious and more need. And the county boofed it, and I think everyone knows that, the notification. We actually found out through one of the members, I think through Cassie, had called my office to say they hadn't been notified. So we missed the night meeting, and then the applicant couldn't be here in December, which is our next night meeting. January, we don't have one. So again, they have the ability, the applicant, to, you know, have this heard in a reasonable amount of time. So we went forward today. So that was completely on the county, yeah, completely our fault. I did visit the site. I've driven by there, you know, hundreds of times and had never stopped at the site. We did a tour with all county staff, I think it was in July, and first time in there. And it's all thanks, pretty much you saw the pictures today, the buildings that were put up, the modulators. And, but a clean operation. I had met, after that, I had met with some of the folks that spoke here today, the Hales, the Olson's, Barnes. I got a great lesson of, oh, and the Cordova, the Cordovas. Got a great lesson. Montpelier was a former rail town. There was a railway that went there until the Savvies and Jeff Barnes will give you a, if you ever want to sit down, it's pretty interesting. But I remember the railroad trestle that went north through Waterford had burnt down in my lifetime. I remember it burning down. So it was a little bustling town, thus the, why there are ranchettes there. I want everyone to understand there's actually still streets. And... And the grain mill, Jeff still operates that on a part-time basis. He has concerns that he doesn't want to get complaints the other way for making dust from Callaway. And I think he has some valid concerns. But I want to go through the concerns really quick, just the issues, because I always try and do the pro con. The watered septic, I have complete confidence that it is a de minimis well, and that the water will be, that will be used will be less than what is currently on the farming operation. And so that, I understand. The traffic, there's 2,500 vehicle trips a day, 500, no, 625 of those are trucks. So we're going to be adding 10 trips over time. So I think that's considered de minimis. It's just the ingress and egress that is the important part, because that's where the accidents will occur. But there are a lot of trucks, and I drive semi-through there myself quite a bit. Air quality, I don't think it's going to have an air quality, it'll probably have a positive benefit, I think that's why the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control didn't think anything of it. The fire concerns we just talked about, and I don't think there'll be any dust. The key issues here, that I think that there's, this is stormwater runoff, I think there was an issue there, and I think it's going to be more difficult, or it's going to take more time than most people working with the regional water board, trying to get a permit if you're going to bifurcate stormwater versus the, the water that comes off of the use of the facility, for lack of a better word. And so that will take some time if you do get it. And I had heard that nothing will move forward without that. So I think that, you know, the state water board is going to mitigate that concern. Noise and odor. So if, if you have issues with noise, it's going to be important that the good neighbor policy actually works, because nobody wants to live next to something that's noisy. I know, I have a holler next to me, and it actually becomes soothing after the first week, it actually helps me sleep, but after the first week, it's not fun the first week. But I know you have the Moda Vista Farming, you have a holler there, you've got Roy Johnson's holler, you've got Varney's holler, and there's a holler on Valley View, I think it's Valley View now, within probably three quarters of a mile, you have four hauling operations, two of them are processing plants. So I know there's traffic year around into some of those. But noise is something that is, you know, can be mitigated, but it has, you have to be very cognizant of that. Lighting and the aesthetics, you know, you don't have a great track record, you didn't plant your trees before, and we've had this happen before in a couple other places, and I can guarantee you that they will be planted now, the, to make a break, an ag break. This was done in 2007, none of us obviously were on the board, and when they moved out there, and I pretty much got the historical lesson from both the visit and some of it through Mr. Barnes, has a great memory of how this has all come together. And so I, I look at it, ag is suffering right now, it is a tough time to be an ag between sigma, if you're not in an irrigation district, even if you're in an irrigation district, you have water, but commodity values are low. This is a value-added proposition to agriculture, and it seems like it fits in a tier two. And so I'm very inclined to support it. I just, my statement to Callaway is that, you know, you may have played a little loose before, but you can't do that now, because now you have board members that are following this, and it's not an admonishment, because I've been red-tagged myself in the past, or my parents have, not me, but, and so, I understand why you need something, you need an office and why you did it, but, you know, water running off your property, noise complaints, things from the neighbors, you have to be, you have to be responsive to it. And I think that's, that's just the way business is today. People are more sensitive to things. So having said that, again, I believe this is a value added. Adding the bottling, I think is a natural progression in a integrated operation. You are moving the product out to get bottled, so there's a, maybe a truck trip savings, maybe not, depending on where you would have labeled. But if you brought it back, all the way back from where you bottled it, didn't, it doesn't make a lot of sense. And the cold storage is a natural part of the operation, just about every tier one and tier two operation have that. So, again, take your neighbors' concerns very seriously, and I think, I think they can be mitigated, as I kind of talked through, but, and because or else it ends up back, you know, the fruit yard, we have issues with the fruit yard. I can think of other issues where people didn't, didn't track their noise or something else, and potentially come back to the planning commission. It doesn't guarantee you can have that business forever if you, if you can't follow, follow the rules. So, again, I think this is not a bad thing, I think this is a good thing for agriculture. It fits into our 2030 plan, not that that's the most important component, but value-added in ag commodities all the way through. You look at, we talked about Bronco Winery, bottling, slicing, dicing, roasting almonds, cal almond, I can just go through cal nut, lots of them around my neighborhood. Houston Nut is on John Fox Road, they do all of that processing, it's value-added. And I think, I think that's a good thing. If it ends up in the growers' pockets, it will give us a more sustainable agriculture in the future.
Supervisor, there was a request from Mr. Romano to amend the development standard number 16 paragraph B. Do you have any thoughts on that?
This is the sign?
Yes.
The size of the sign? Yeah, if staff agree to it.
Yeah, we would be okay with the modification as proposed by Callaway.
So that's, I have to read it in, right?
Yes, please.
Okay. So the proposed edit to condition 16, it's be up to two wall signs. One, not exceeding 32 square feet in size, each on the cold storage building, and one Callaway identification sign on the bottling building facing south and not exceeding 45 square feet in size. That's the additional language. And then the rest of it is the same condition.
Yes. Do you want it all red, or is that good?
Forty-five square feet in size in the expansion area, the signs shall be limited to one sign per building.
Right? Any other members of the board?
Yeah, I just, I just want to, just add one more thing, just to reinforce what Vito said, I mean, this is difficult for us, and you can see how difficult it is for Vito, it's his district, I know. And, and just the, that we're taking very seriously the neighbors' concerns, I just want to emphasize that to the applicants here. And so we, we really want to make sure that this is, and the good neighbor policy is in place. And so I don't want, if this board approves this, that it's, it's not just a green light, okay, we're good to go. And, I mean, we really want to keep an eye and make sure that we're good neighbors here. And so, and just to let you know, I can, I probably speak for the board, that we will all be watching this and want to make sure that these individuals aren't damaged as a result of this. And so, anyway, bottom line, just, we want to reinforce that this board is not just, you know, easily, kind of willingly approving this, that we have concerns, we think it fits into the description as to what can be there, but we have, we want to make sure that we are very good neighbors, that the applicant are very good neighbors, and that these issues that the neighbors have are going to be mitigated to the, to the best they can, so.
Okay. Other questions? If none, are they entertaining a possible motion?
Chair, an appropriate motion would be approve staff recommendations one through six and amend the development standard number 16 paragraph B as requested by the applicant.
Okay. I will make that motion then.
Second? Motion by Supervisor Withrow, second by Supervisor Buck Condit. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Right, next is the discussion item, approval to accept the Health Services Agency Public Health Division's 2023 annual report. Conducting the presentation will be Heather Duval.
Hello, Chairman Grewold, members of the board, Mr. Hayes and Mr. Bose, thank you for having us here today. We are very excited to present to you. I am Heather Duval, the Public Health Director, and I have with me Dr. Thea Papas-Zoninos, our Public Health Officer. While Dr. Papa and I travel together, I just want to, sometimes there's questions about our role, and I am the Public Health Director, and so my, my role is more administrative and oversight to the division. Dr. Papa, as the Public Health Officer, directs the medical aspects of public health, and is responsible for assessing and protecting the county's health status and upholding relevant state, federal, and county laws. We're very pleased to be here today. As I stated, we are a little bit late in bringing to you our Public Health Annual Report, is the 2022-23 report. It's coming to you later than usual, because we've had some planning around the health initiative, so that we could put the proposal together, which requires some meetings with many of you all, as well as CEO's office, to move this forward. You'll note that some of the data in the presentation is noted as preliminary. This is due to the fact that the, the report is a fiscal year report, and the data from the California Department of Health, Public Health, pardon me, is often finalized at the end of the calendar year. So what we'd like to do is going forward, to bring this report to you in April, so that we can do it in line with National Public Health Week, which is always a fun time for us, but also, that way all the data that we bring to you is finalized. So in previous presentations, we've talked about the 10 public health essential services, and those really feed up into three core, pardon me, three core public health functions, assessment, health education and policy development, and assurance. These really provide the framework to protect and promote the health of all people in our communities, and that's what we strive to do every day. We're monitoring the community's health, we're creating evidence-based programs, and we're ensuring access to essential health services and monitoring program effectiveness. So first, as we look toward assessment, this is really how we do our data monitoring, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Papa to share.
Hi, so we'll be just going over some indicators and some data. So this is a slide that examines health behaviors and some other determinants of health in our community. So when we compare health indicators for Stanislaus County, or most counties in the central San Joaquin Valley, with California as a whole, sadly, we often fare worse than overall state metrics. So this slide actually has, we are the turquoise, and then blue is California, and then we've actually indicated, we looked at some of our previous public health report, the last public health report, and we said that we do better, and if so, that's available in green, if we have that information, and if it, if it's worse, it's in, it's in the orange color. Not all metrics have data to compare from the previous report. So some of the root causes for this, why we may fare worse than California as a whole, are thought to be driven by social determinants of health and behavioral factors. The U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Office of Disease Prevention and Health Promotion sets data-driven national public health objectives to improve health and well-being for each decade. And the next decade that they're looking to is, the targets are Healthy People 2030. So I'll reference some Healthy People 2030 targets when I'm in this talk. So as we can see, there are many areas for improvement. For instance, looking at the prevalence of adult smoking in our community, Healthy People, you know, we're doing worse than California, our adult smoking was at 14% prevalence, compared to 9% for California. Healthy People sets a target of 6.1%. So we have some work to do in that area. This slide shows the impact of those health behaviors and the social determinants of health on many chronic diseases, such as heart disease and diabetes, and again, how we compare it to California. For some common chronic diseases, like diabetes and heart disease prevalence, we are doing worse when compared to California as a whole. This slide is also looking at other health indicators, including all cancer death rates, as well as sexually transmitted infection rates. So for STIs or sexually transmitted infections, overall, our STI numbers are comparable with California. But if we, this information isn't available on this slide, but if we look at specific STIs, such as syphilis, we do have some problem areas. But overall, our STIs are comparable to California as a whole. I did want to highlight the significant difference in the rates of all cancer deaths between California and our county. So nationally, so you can see on the, on the slide that our cancer, all cancer age-adjusted death rate is somewhat higher than California's. And then nationally, rates are somewhat higher than we see in California, but these national rates are still lower than for Stanislaus County. So in 2021, the national rate was 146.6. The Healthy People target is 122, I'm sorry, the Healthy People target for 2030 is 122.7 per 100,000. So we do have much room for improvement with this metric. I would like to say that Stanislaus has shown improvement in this metric compared to our previous public health report. Over the last 30 years, the risk of dying from cancer has steadily declined in the U.S., which is good, very good. But the American Cancer Society, you may have seen in recent news reports, you know, over the last couple of years, the American Cancer Society reports that the incidents, incidence refers to new cancers, diagnosis of new cancers is increasing for many common cancers, and worryingly, there is an increase in some cancers in adults 50 and younger. So, I'll look at the next slide. So this slide is looking at some of our maternal-child health indicators, sort of grouped together. Overall, we can see that we are relatively close to the state. Some of our indicators are better than how California as a whole is faring, some are worse. Nationally, we are seeing decreasing teen birth rates since 1991. And although Stanislaus County rates are higher than for California, with teen births nationally, and nationally, overall, they are also trending downward in our county. One point of concern on this slide is our infant mortality rate, which is worse than the state, and also has, is worse than our last public health annual report. When I look deeper into our county metric data, they had infant mortality rates available for two of our main, two of the main groups who reside in our county, Hispanics and Caucasians. I didn't see it for other groups, where there are less numbers available. But when I looked at it, it seemed that our higher infant mortality rates were driven more by higher rates of infant mortality in Caucasians. The Healthy People 2030 target is five, five infant deaths per 100,000 live births. This graph shows the percentage of Stanislaus County births that are preterm by race and ethnicity. So we note, from this graph, we can see health disparities, with increased preterm births among black mothers, when compared to other race and ethnicities. And I think this highlights why it's so important to drill down the data. Data drives our actions in public health, and it's important to know where disparities exist and where additional resources might be needed. So this slide is looking at our, some of our data related to opioid overdoses. So as we all know, opioids are a very big issue impacting the health of our community, our state, and our nation. And although, although public health does not directly oversee the drug prevention and treatment programs in this county, public health does assess the impact of these issues in our community. And together with BHRS and other community partners, we have an active role in the Stanislaus County Opioid Safety Coalition. So looking at this data, it's not going in the right direction. Opioid overdose death rates for Stanislaus County residents from 2020 to 2021 increased by 44% among 35 to 44-year-olds. And our age-adjusted death rates for opioids are, is higher in Stanislaus County than for California as a whole. Looking at data obtained locally from our corner, the big push behind this recent increase in opioid deaths is the synthetic opioid fentanyl. Fentanyl accounts for an increasing proportion of the total drug-related deaths in our county. This slide is looking at our deaths related to suicide. So looking at this, we are doing a little bit worse when compared to California as a whole. For Healthy People 2030, for suicide, the target is 12.8 per 100,000. This slide is looking at Stanislaus County's top 10 causes of death for the fiscal year 2022 to 2023. So looking at the top 10 causes of death for this time period, our top causes are heart disease, which accounted for 20% of deaths, and cancer, which accounted for 19% of deaths. COVID, which had a much higher place in our last public health annual report, has slid down. Nationally, the top three causes of Nationally, the top three causes of death are heart disease, number one, followed by cancer, and then unintentional injury or accidents or preventable injuries. So I, with this, I, the graphs and the data that we chose, we just chose to highlight some of the data that's available in our public health annual report, just to give some context for you all and for our community. There's obviously a lot more data available in our public health annual report for those who wish to pursue it further. So with that, I'll turn the presentation back to Heather, our Public Health Director.
Thank you. So now we get into a little bit of the work of what our staff are doing all year long, right? We get to highlight some of the really incredible work that they do in the areas of health education and policy development. Here, this graph, just this pictorial, really just notes some of the work that has been done. As Dr. Papa shared, there are certainly some areas where we have some health concerns, particularly chronic disease such as diabetes and heart disease, and some improvements needed in maternal and child health indicators. So as we look at that data, that's how we develop the programs that we're doing. And so you can see from this that we had over 27,000 prenatal, postpartum women, infants and children, who were served by the WIC program to improve access to nutritious foods. They also get breastfeeding support, they also get help with parenting skills, and that to help with some of those infant mortality and low birth weight that we noted. We also had home visiting nurses back out in the homes. Over 6,500 home visits were done with clients who are looking for and appreciating assistance on parenting skills, healthy birth outcomes. We're providing education to CalFresh-eligible community members, over 4,000 of those, about nutrition, healthy eating, as we look to some of those chronic disease areas. Also, in partnership with many of those involved in the opioid coalition and beyond, are distributing Narcan and fentanyl test strips as available. And with our increased infrastructure, we've been able to really investigate a considerable number of communicable diseases, and had some success with 77% of those diagnosed with HIV being connected with a healthcare provider. Additionally, working with Partners in Safe Community, this is really an area that public health does a lot of work around, training and capacity building. We have trained many of those in healthcare community regarding infection control, infection prevention policies, breastfeeding practices, things of that nature. Through our Emergency Preparedness Program, we've also responded to five emergency incidents, recruited volunteers, and conducted 14 trainings. I'd be remiss not to note that, as you're hearing in the news, H5N1 or bird flu is an area of concern in the Central Valley. I'm happy to report to you that as of today, we have not had any cases in dairies in our community. Historically, in past years, we have had some cases in poultry, but we are partnering and working with other county departments, OES, the Ad Commissioner, NDR, monitoring the situation, making sure we are prepared. The risk to our community is very low at this time, but really, our focus is on protecting workers in those industries. And then lastly, as we look around foundational changes and policy and systems work that our staff is doing, we're really looking at how do we improve the community that people live in? So doing some walk audits, look at walkability of communities to increase physical activity. There was an 18% increase in purchasing of fruits and vegetables, with almost $4 million distributed in our community through the WIC program. We had school garden projects where kids are learning about nutrition, while also learning about where our fruits and vegetables come from, really important things that we're, sometimes we're missing these days. So I shared a few things about what public health is doing to implement program activities. Our public health staff do incredible work, and I'm extremely proud of them, and they impact our community in very positive ways. However, as the data shows, we're not making improvements we'd like to see with these challenging health issues. And we know the best way to do this is to make an impact is through collective partnerships and systems change. We have an opportunity to broaden the scope and impact of the Community Health Improvement Plan through the proposed health initiative that I'll be talking about. This is just a little bit of a timeline of what's happening currently. Historically, the Community Health Assessment, or I'm sorry, historically, our Community Health Improvement Plan, which includes an assessment to provide data to perform that plan, has been really led and directed by the Public Health Department. However, I'm really pleased that during this past year, we've really increased our partnership with others in our community. United Way is serving as a fiscal agent. We're working closely with all of our local hospitals and managed care plans to have a shared community health assessment and community health improvement plan going forward. This is partially we have shared requirements. If you recall, we were nationally recognized as an accredited public health department in 2019. One of those requirements is to be reaccredited every five years, and one of those requirements is to have a community health assessment, community health improvement plan. Additionally, our local nonprofit hospitals are also required to do a community health needs assessment, to meet IRS requirements, and our managed care plans, due to CalAim, are now keenly focused and walking hand in hand with us to carry this work forward, which we're very excited about. I'd like to share with you that this is not usual throughout the state. If I talk to my colleagues in other areas, they're not working together as we are. We had some great partnerships, and folks have really come to the table, and we really, really appreciate them. We have, this is, for us, it's a five-year cycle, but in order to be good partners, we're really working closely and have agreed as a unit to carry this work out, this cyclical process every three years, so we have a really good data monitoring system. So the result is a cross-sector health improvement plan that will have aligned goals, which will carry forward the final goal area of focus on prevention. Addition. I'm sorry, went out of order there. So just looking at this slide, just so you know, where the community health assessment is happening right now, we're doing stakeholder interviews, focus groups, and that prioritization of that information will move forward the community health improvement plan. Okay. The complex issues that I talked about, that we've been talking about, require broad support and collaboration to improve. Our goal is to expand the CHIP into a larger, well-resourced health initiative. To do this, we're proposing to build internal capacity to lead, promote, and sustain the health initiative by hiring additional staff to support that work, a manager four, a manager two, and admin support, and also to enhance and leverage community engagement through a leadership council. While this challenge ship are not new, we've come to you before to share about this work, follow-through to bring measurable results has been limited. The public health has limited resources for this work, as well as our partners. This work is really an extra, an add-on to the work that's being done on a daily basis. Folks have competing priorities, and we absolutely understand and support that. It has also been focused on community programming, and by leveraging this, pardon me, leveraging this into a larger health initiative, we really feel that that will give it the momentum and have a larger focus on larger systems change that will have a greater impact. We think an investment to fully implement a comprehensive health initiative is required. We're asking for three staffs, as I shared, and I wanted to clarify that there is adequate fund balance to support this request and would not be coming from the general fund. This new team will be charged with focusing around results through maintaining partnership and community engagement, ongoing performance management, we're really monitoring results, ensuring these with community indicators, with you all, the leadership council, and the community, consistent communication and reporting, as I said, and partner capacity building and facilitating dedicated work groups that have clear measurable objectives. Additionally, these staff will facilitate a newly established leadership council that will be made up of the executive leadership from partner agencies, which include, as mentioned before, local hospitals, the medical managed care plans, healthcare providers, county leadership, representation from each of the various supervisor districts, and other county initiatives. This was a result in the CHIP no longer being just a public health initiative, but a shared commitment across sectors to improve health throughout the community. This council will provide direction, oversight, and alignment with board of supervisors' priorities and values, ensure cross-sector partnership and systems level change, and assist in obtaining additional resources for coordinated health improvement strategies. So lastly, I'd just like to share the staff recommendations. We are asking for your approval, and that is to accept the Health Services Agency Public Health Update, amend the salary and position allocation resolution to reflect that recommended changes outlined in Staffing Impact Section of this report, affected the first full pay period after Board Supervisor's approval, and to direct the auditor controller to increase appropriations by 534,792 in the Health Services Agency Public Health Budget Unit. And with that, we will welcome any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Any members of the board, questions, concerns, issues?
I just want to say, Heather and Dr. Papa, great presentation. So I only look at trend lines, that's it. And you have six green dots, and you got three, but we don't know how far we've, it's not better than last year, that percentage that we're at worst. But again, you have so many things you're working on, you have limited staff, obviously, to make a dent in every category would be difficult. And you kind of see where we really lag the state is where you need to concentrate. I'm truly amazed, I'm not amazed at the fentanyl crisis. We've seen that, it seems to be getting a little better because the word is getting out that kids can't grab a Valium and expect it to be a Valium or something. So I think people are becoming more cognizant of it. I love that the homicide rate is so low. I think we're headed for a record low this year in the unincorporated area, something, you know, I think there's been two homicides only. So that's kudos to the police departments and the sheriff's department on that. Getting people healthy, and Dr. Walker, his statement to me at the Children and Families Commission, I say it every time, the greatest indicator of the health of a newborn child is, the easiest way to find out is the educational attainment of the mother. And every one of these things, whether it's, you know, anything to do with kids, when you know you're taking your prenatal vitamins, you have to see a doctor, you can't drink alcohol, just things that some of us would take for granted, you end up with better birth outcomes and healthier outcomes, and that leads probably downstream to cancer rates and obesity rates. I can't, I can't say that for sure because I'm not a doctor, but it just makes sense. And then the last thing is, I think it was, I can't remember, one of you had, we were looking at the cancer rates, we have a higher death rate on cancer, but that could be driven by our not having enough medical professionals, too, that could be a contributor, but you had said there's a higher incidence of under 50, under the age of 50.
I think that's a national trend, that you may see a lot of news articles around that, that there's like colon cancer, especially among younger, like the younger people, less than 50, like it's, you know, before the USPTF guidelines, you didn't even have colon cancer screening, colon cancer screening didn't even start until age 50. But now, because of these, you know, you're seeing a lot more younger people, they've had to move the guidelines to the age of 45 to start colon cancer screening. So that, that's, for whatever reason, we're seeing some cancers, not all cancers, but some cancers, we're seeing more of these new cases in younger people, for whatever reasons. In terms of death rates, you know, from cancer, which is what that, the data we showed, you know, that we had higher compared to California, you're right, there's probably a lot of causes, and one of which is, it could be related to access to care. One of the biggest drivers is the earlier you discover the cancer, the better your success rate is in terms of treating it. So getting people screened, getting them the preventive care they need, they need, will ultimately, you know, impact those rates favorably.
Great job, team of public health, and I know you have your team out there, too.
All right, thank you. I'm going to take it out to the public. Any members of the public with any questions for the presenters? Come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ron McMurtry here. I just have a quick question. I am a veteran and use the Veterans Clinic, and I'm, that's, you know, federal, and so I'm wondering, how do you manage the data to have accurate data for the area? I mean, we live here, you know, people probably OD on Modesto streets even though they use a Modesto clinic. I'm kind of curious about how you manage the data.
Well, there's, well, we get, there's, part of our function as the Public Health Department is surveillance, which means collecting data and, you know, looking at trends and so forth. So they, you know, in California, they're, nationally, there's some notifiable conditions, like various infectious diseases, various conditions, and in California statute, there are certain conditions that have to be reported to the Public Health Department, whether those are coming from the labs, whether those are coming from the provider. So we collect, not on every condition, but on, you know, for a lot of diseases or infectious diseases, those reports come to us, and, you know, we intervene as appropriate. Also, just looking at various trends, you know, for example, the overdose deaths, well, for example, another one of our roles in public health is, you know, with vital statistics. So we have access to, you know, the death, you know, the death reports, and so we can look at those trends and observe those trends as well. Sometimes when the, for like overdose deaths, for example, we also have to work closely with the coroner's office because they get those, they get that information a lot sooner than it may show up in a death certificate. So, but there are lots of ways to access information.
All right. If there's no further comment, I'm going to bring it back to the board for any other comments or a possible motion.
Just a quick comment here, if I could. Thank you guys very much for doing this, Heather and Dr. Papa. Thea is aunt in?
It is, yes.
It is aunt in?
My cousins always make fun of me for this, but yeah.
It's a Greek thing.
I should not be called that, but yeah, it's an Americanized, you know, that's what I.
Perfect, perfect. So thank you guys for doing this. You know, it's great, just this report, this update in the Community Health Improvement Program here, you know, it's part of, back when we started Focus on Prevention, it was our, one of our goals, right, was for healthy, we said our families are healthy physically and mentally, emotionally and spiritually. And so this just is a continuation of that as we, as we finish that off. And so a lot of, a lot of good stuff here to encouraging and still work to be done, of course, but it looks like we're making progress. The opiate deaths are still disturbing and disappointing, but I know we have a lot of good stuff going on there, especially with our opiate coalition, doing unbelievable work there, and it just bringing awareness to everybody with regard to that. And that was never more evident than the last walk, I can't remember what the walk was called, geez. We had the walk.
One pill can kill.
One pill can kill, yeah.
I think that's.
Yeah, and just the amount of people that showed up for that compared to the previous year, which is unbelievable. So anyway, great progress, we're working towards trying to help in that area. And the suicides is the other thing that's disappointing, that we have the veterans here today, they're a big chunk of that, I believe. But also, I think as a result of mental health issues that we have, and people, kids coming out of COVID and everything that we had to deal with there is contributing to that. And I know we're working hard on that. We've got our mental health in more, probably than ever, involved in our schools right now. And so that's great stuff. Last thing, but I just want to recognize that we just kind of hit quickly, was the Leadership Council that I know we've been working on. We had a lot of participation in our meetings during COVID, and individuals who were concerned about the direction that we were going as a public health, and government was going with public health, and now we see why, because of the issues we're dealing with our kids, and what they had to deal with during, during COVID. And I think that there was a big concern that we were operating, kind of, government was operating kind of in a vacuum, and I were, I would argue they were right, that we were just doing, here's what we need to do, without getting the input of the public more. And I think that's what this Leadership Council will do. It will, God forbid, we ever have another, you know, pandemic that we have to deal with in our lifetime, but, but just to have these individuals who are out in the public, I mean, I know we had during COVID doctors coming here and saying, why aren't you doing this, why aren't you doing that? And I think, you know, we know what's best, government knows what's best, we're doing this, and we were getting our orders from the state, and it was just, I think it was a mess. And so I think that that's then, to have this leadership group here involved, our council, and to bring the public and get their input, nothing bad can come from that. It will only help us as we deal with issues that we think that we know best as government. We find out quickly that there are so many other things involved, and the public input is best to have there. So, and I know Buck's been involved in that, as we tried to get this thing going, as these individuals that used to appear during our meetings during COVID have been involved in it and have pushed for that. So I think this is a great thing, too. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, possible motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Second.
All right, got a motion by Supervisor Keta, second by Supervisor Rithro. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, 5-0. All right. Correspondents, acknowledged, receipt of correspondence, and referred, recommended on the agenda. Next, we have board supervisor reports. Any members of the board have any reports?
Please vote.
Vote. Well, at least three people on the day just voted today. All right, Legislative Fiscal and Management Report, Chief Executive's Office.
Yeah, just want to report. Want to report a couple of items. First is, we did, at the request of the San Joaquin Rail Commission, offer a few letters of support for some of their grant applications for several projects, including their Tuolumne River Bridge and Track Extension Project, North Lake Transfer Station, and the Series and Modesto Station projects. So those projects are supported by our legislative platform, and we were happy to support those with a grant application support letter. Also, wanted to let you know that we will be welcoming the California State of Also, wanted to let you know that we will be welcoming the California State Association and County's Legislative Advocacy Team, is coming to our county next week, and they're going to take advantage of some of the time off from the legislative session to meet with some of our key departments and county leadership, to discuss some of the initiatives we're working on, projects, and ultimately learn a little bit more about Stanislaus County. So we're excited for CSAC to come join us. And then, as you mentioned, today is election day, so just always remind the public, please visit standvote.com for vote center and ballot drop-off locations, as well as our election results following the 8:00 PM close of the polls. So thank you.
All right. And with that, I'm gonna adjourn our meeting and ask council to report, county council to report closed session items.
Yes, we have two, well, let's, let's start with, we have a conference of legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9 subdivision D 243. We have two matters there to discuss. Regarding the first matter, in December of 2023, the county received a letter from COVANTAS Stanislaus Inc., renamed, which is now renamed ReWorld Stanislaus Inc., seeking the closure of a waste of energy facility. Closure affects two agreements with ReWorld. The county's side lease with the operating agreement and the operating agreement between ReWorld and the county and the city of Modesto. The board will discuss a proposal to terminate those two agreements. Regarding the second matter, it involves allegations by a former employee of misconduct in a hostile work environment. Would that be appropriate for public comment?
All right. Enough of a comment. All right, we'll be adjourning to a closed session. Thank you for all the members of the public in attendance. Thank you, Deputy Fisher, for watching over us. Appreciate it, and have a good rest of the day.